In the City Council meeting of the City of Palo Alto from Monday, October 3rd, 2022, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Burt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Philsef?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? For the record, we have six present.
Thank you. And our first item is an agenda change. We will not be having a closed session tonight on labor. And so we will move into our first item, which is a special order of the day, adoption of a resolution for Heather Souza upon her retirement. And I have the resolution here and I will be happy to read it. Whereas Heather Souza served the City of Palo Alto and its citizens as a member of the Palo Alto Police Department for 25 years, first becoming a police officer in 1997, then a police agent in 2005, and ultimately a police sergeant in 2021. And whereas Sergeant Souza has worked on all shifts of the patrol schedule and has worked in many specialty assignments to include personnel and training supervisor, staff assistant, court liaison officer, reserve training officer, field training officer, crisis negotiator, and emergency vehicle operations instructor. And whereas Sergeant Souza has an indefatigably positive attitude and a remarkable ability to develop positive relationships with coworkers and members of the community alike, and Sergeant Souza has a tireless work ethic, one that drove her to always assist her fellow department members with any task and not stop until the job was completely thoroughly, completed thoroughly and correctly. And Sergeant Souza repeatedly demonstrated commendable flexibility and willingness to take on challenging assignments for the betterment of the department and her coworkers. And Sergeant Souza supported her coworkers with a high degree of professionalism and respect that is in alignment with the mission of the department. And whereas Sergeant Souza deserves a long and happy retirement for all her years of dedicated service. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Palo Alto hereby commends the outstanding public service of Sergeant Heather Souza and records its appreciation, as well as the appreciation of the citizens of the community upon her retirement. Welcome, Chief Binder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. You know, it's, uh, it's with, you know, bittersweet to have Heather here tonight and be leaving us. And, you know, all those words in the proclamation are true, but there's so much more to Heather, her intangibles. And as I, you know, listen to those words and her very impressive resume, I think of all the other things that she brings to the department. You know, at work, when you work with that employee who just makes the place better, whether it be by their presence, their smile, their positive attitude, their work ethic, that's Heather. And last week, we had her final briefing and it was amazing. It was a Tuesday night at eight. And the room was packed and it was filled with current and retired members and people, friends and family and people that she had touched all along her journey. And it was such a great testament to her character and her work ethic and who she is as a person. And, you know, I just want to recognize the fact that it's hard to be a mom and to work shift work and to rise through the ranks like she does. And I'm just so impressed by everything that she's done over the course of her career. And it's just been such a pleasure to work with her. Heather and I actually attended the Police Academy together back 25 years ago. So it's great to see her and see her off when I got to see her at the beginning. So without further ado, just Heather, your loss is a true loss to the department and the city, and we are so grateful for your service to this community and for your friendship, your character, and your professionalism. Thank you.
And Sergeant, would you like to say a few words?
I have nothing but positive things to say. I've enjoyed my entire 25, almost 26 years, serving the community, serving for the city, for the police department. Have, will carry many memories with me. And I just appreciate all the opportunities provided to me. And thank you for a very long, healthy, happy career.
I see that Councilmember DuBois has a light.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your service. My, uh, my son was born in 1997 and thinking of everything I've been through with him, I truly just wanted to say thank you. 25 years is a long time and I really hope you enjoy your retirement.
I will come down and present your proclamation.
Just for, in attendance, it's her husband Derek, who was a firefighter and a police officer for the city, her mother and her brother here supporting her.
And I, I realize I skipped past roll call. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Would you like a motion?
Oh.
To adopt the resolution?
We did. I, I was busy reading the.
No worries.
That's right. So now, yes, we'll entertain a motion.
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Great. Vice Mayor Koo, second in the motion.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor. I just want to note that we do have one hand raised. I'm not sure if you want to call this person, Aaron James?
Oh, great. So we have one member of the public who would like to speak. Our first, our speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Sergeant Souza, I did not have the good fortune of, of actually meeting you or interacting during your 25-plus years as a sergeant. But I did happen to hear from another member of law enforcement who I consider to be an extraordinary individual, that you added a lot to the Palo Alto Police Department. And I want to thank you about that very much. And Chief Binder, there is one person who you and I have talked about, who's left the off, the department sometimes.
I'm sorry, Mr. James, we're just on, speaking on this resolution in honor.
And I am speaking on this. There's just one other person, Chief, that deserves a similar resolution that hasn't received it from you. And you and I have talked about it a couple of times, but let me go back to Sergeant Souza. And I hope, Chief, that you'll take care of that other business that we've talked about. Congratulations on your, your extraordinary work, from what I've been told. And I wish you an extraordinary retirement. I know how difficult it is to be a, a public servant. It takes a lot. And so congratulations and good fortune in your retirement.
Thank you. So on that note, would the clerk please call the roll?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I believe Vice Mayor Koo had her hand up.
But it's down now.
It's the seconded.
Yeah, it was the second motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsef?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah.
Yes. The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And next item is agenda changes, additions and deletions. We already noted that we do not have the item one, the labor session tonight. Also, item eight, the Tefra hearing will not be heard this evening. And then we may have an additional agenda change after the consent calendar. So our next item is public comment. This is on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. And do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. One moment, please.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Gardner. Welcome.
It's echoing. I can't, 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 can't.
You need to mute. You, you have a really bad echo, unfortunately.
Hello?
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 You still have your echo. We're going to need to move on unless you're able to resolve that.
You hear me?
Still with the same echo. Okay. Unfortunately, we're, we're going to have to move on this evening. And our next speaker is Terry Holzmer. Ms. Gardner, if you're able to resolve that after our next speakers, we will give another shot. Welcome to Terry Holzmer.
Thank you. Quickly, I wanted to bring to the council's attention information about the 200 portage project and the transparency, or I should say, lack of transparency, that I hope the council will ask staff to improve upon. I believe that there has been a real failure to communicate to the public here and especially to the Ventura, Mayfield, and the NVCAP working group members, which I was a part of, about the, the just released DEIR. No notification to these groups was forthcoming from staff. Not to these groups. In addition, I feel that there has been little notification or none about the scoping session that apparently occurred earlier this year. Clearly, this was an indication that there is a lack of communication. There was only one resident that even responded to the scoping session. I request that council take specific steps to ensure that all interested parties are properly informed and are kept informed. One last thing. Given that this project is so important, especially to our neighborhood, I know, I would hope that the DEIR process deadline of October 31st could be extended, or at least moved back some, so that more citizens could participate, especially in writing extensive comments about the DEIR. I would hope that you would please consider this extension as others are important to have others participate and be involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James, to be followed by Roberta Alquest.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So just wanted to, I'll probably be briefed tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that I am continuing to work and trying to develop a body of knowledge on weaponized canines. I did send you a piece about Lisa Cavillidge. And Pete Seeger memorialized her in a song. And I hadn't thought about it since I tried the nuclear weapons trespass case way back in 1979. And she was one of our witness, our, our proposed witnesses. She did not get, we did not get to put our witnesses on in front of the jury because I believe that the judge felt and the government felt that we were going to put nuclear weapons, US nuclear weapon policy on trial. That may have been the case, but we simply wanted to put our clients on to talk to the jury about why it was they trespassed at Lockheed. But Lisa Cavillidge, as you'll see in the, in the song that I sent you and writings about her, grew up in Nuremberg and during World War II. And when she tried to immigrate to this country with, uh, she was going to, eventually did marry, I understand, a, a US serviceman, the immigration officials grilled her about why she didn't take a stand against the Nazi atrocities. And they grilled her again and they grilled her again. And eventually she made it here and she decided that she wouldn't allow that to happen with her daughters. And eventually she was arrested, you know, protesting napalm, the US government's policy on napalm in Vietnam. But what's the point? I believe honestly, as I, the more that I study weaponized canines, that they are trained to be very cruel and they are also mistreated as they're trained to bite human flesh. And guess what? They were, the, the trainers, some of the trainers that train these dogs, they wear uniforms, they cost $1,500. Guess what color those uniforms are? I'll leave that to you tonight to figure out. The person that's training me told me that when he or she was in the academy at Evergreen College, guess what color the targets were for target practice? The images of guess who? You can think about that and probably figure it out as well. So, you know, I've talked to Jeff Rosen over the years in his office on tasers, haven't managed to get them banned in this county yet. Talked with him about a police crimes unit. Well, I'm going to be talking to him about the canines because I know he visited the concentration camps. And I know coming upon Yom Kippur, that he is also aware that there were weaponized canines that attacked Jewish prisoners and were trained to go for the groin. These are crimes against humanity. And just like Lisa Cavillidge understood that all the Germans, there was a collective guilt. If you turn your backs on the crimes that these animals are committing against people, then there's going to be collective guilt that comes down on your heads. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker is Roberta Alquest, to be followed by Pete Bennett. Welcome.
Roberta, you're there? Can you please?
Can you hear me now?
We can now.
Thank you. I have four points. As part of the low-income senior housing committee, we are. We are circulating a rent stabilization and just cause eviction petition. Time has passed and nothing much has changed, so please give us serious consideration.
You may be cutting in and out.
Yeah, I'm not sure why. There's a delay on this.
Okay, just go ahead and speak.
Okay, the second point is there are 500-plus or minus vacant houses in Palo Alto. We would like you to initiate a vacancy tax on these. We have a housing crisis, and there are a lot of seniors who could use that housing. The third point is experience quote-unquote and knowledge quote-unquote are not characteristics that necessarily provide us with the needed 6,000-plus housing units in Palo Alto. We hope that the city will be thoughtful in voting for candidates who are truly talking about big changes and much more housing. So far, it's a pretty empty bucket. The last point is that seniors are being given up to $300 rent increases. We have received notice as part of our committee, and there's no recourse for these people. They can go nowhere. They're afraid to speak out, either to you or to their landlords or landladies, and that's why we're interested in having you develop some form of rent stabilization. Cities all around us have it. East Palo Alto's had it for maybe 15, 20 years now. Mendel Park is working on getting it. San Jose Mountain View has it. We need some way of controlling these outrageous rents. Some of these landlords don't even answer their phone. If you try V-Rance or Stanford Financial, their numbers say, well, we don't have any space on our message machine. Call back again. We've had people calling for two weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pete Bennett, to be followed by Matt Schlegel, our final speaker, although we'll give Elizabeth Gardner another try if her mic is working.
Hello, my name is Pete Bennett. I guess I'm live. Yeah, there it is. You don't have live video, I see. I am the plaintiff in a case that affected, that occurred in your city. The name of the case is Bennett versus Gary Collins. Mr. Collins was linked to a police scandal here locally in Walnut Creek where I live, known as the CNETScandal.com, which I've been publishing. Mr. Collins was linked to that scandal with the chief of police of Walnut Creek and the city manager on November 2nd, 2011, a few months after the arrest began. Mr. Collins fell to his death in Palo Alto High School. He is an assailant that nearly killed me in 2004 in my house, a month after my F-250 exploded on the freeway in Danville, California. I have gone round and round with law enforcement. I have repeatedly emailed the district attorney's office. They know who I am. I believe there's a linkage to my story with the police officer killed, Michael Smith, to an incident in the East Bay. I'm up to multiple police officers killed and family killed. Part of what happened is I had a family trust forged away, costing me millions. Now, I follow that trust and some people in the family. The Stracks were murdered in Utah. Their name was Benjamin Strack, who had killed a family of five. Those are my nephews. The other nephew is connected to Jeffrey Skoll of the Skoll Award and the folks over at the Rise Fund. Isaac Strack received an award from Jeffrey Skoll, and his brother was killed. They received, their family was killed just a few months after a patent was issued at eBay to Isaac Strack and others regarding credit card fraud. So here I am, 10, 20 years later, still fighting the same people. I've lost millions of dollars. Nobody wants to listen. City of Walnut Creek has, I've been beaten up, I've been thrown through windows, I've been poisoned, I spend a lot of time in the hospital dealing with medical. I'm going to, I have lost everything, and for a while I slept on the streets of Walnut Creek for six years. My life is at risk. Call the city of Walnut Creek and start doing the important things about finding out who killed my family, how my cousin fits into it, and I gotta go after five seconds. Thank you for your time. CNETScandal.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Matt Schlegel. Welcome.
Thank you. I trust that I'll be able to speak on S-CAP-specific issues later. Okay. So I'm just going to speak broadly just about some personal experiences that I'm having with the climate crisis. So I had a friend who had a home in Paradise, and he lost his home, and he essentially became a climate refugee. Then I have a business associate who lived in, or lives in Fort Meyer, Florida, and I haven't heard from him since Wednesday. I contacted him Wednesday just to ask him if he was okay, and he says, yeah, I think we're gonna be okay, but I haven't heard from him since, so I'm very worried about him seeing how the water rose there, and I know his house was, was right there. You know, we're having these, you know, horrific experiences weekly now. I mean, I talked to you last week, and just in the last week, we've had a hurricane in Fort Meyer, and now we have another one in Mexico. Category four, nearly category four. Now, we also hopefully, you know, have enough momentum in our community to start to make some, some, of Stanford students and Stanford professors, when they discovered that the DOR School of Sustainability was taking money from the fossil fuel industry, they held a protest at the opening ceremony and insisted that we don't take money from the fossil fuel industry because it's not sustainable. You know, it's very inconsistent with the school of sustainability to be taking money from the fossil fuel industry. So every molecule of fossil fuel that we burn just gets us that much closer to climate collapse, and every molecule that we avoid burning helps give us a little bit of runway. And so I just want everybody to think about in their personal lives, family, you know, community, school, work, just think about ways to stop burning fossil fuel, because really, that's what we need to do at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll give Elizabeth Gardner another chance to see if she's been able to deal with that echo.
Yes, thank you. I so much apologize, you guys. I thought that was your end. According to my math calculation, about a two-bedroom, one-bath, 1960s multifamily apartment here in Palo Alto currently is about $4 to $5 per square feet. This is something along, built in the 1960s. This is, you know, has shared laundry, maybe, maybe one parking space. And in addition, you know, one applicant has to prove 700 credit score, three times income to rent, three months of cash reserve, $40 to $60 for per household member to apply for rental. And I just want to bring this up because I really want to support this rent stabilization petition in this rental survey, because it will help stabilize and maintain the quality and ensure that people can stay in their homes. For instance, I live at Mayfield Place. It was just about five and a half years ago, and they raised the rent 11% a year, and it is a very low-income place. It was a joint agreement between the city of Palo Alto and Stanford, and after five years, Segway constructed it and related wholesale ground lease. It's falling apart, and many residents are very fearful of getting, you know, evicted because they have complaints about the hot water, or that there's cracks in the concrete, or that the building is sloped towards ECR. I just really also want to talk briefly about the value of home for families, not just walls around humans plunking 4,000-plus units in an area like Rome and industrial on the Bay Shore. There's no infrastructure on a freeway, near Sea Rise, no transit school, city amenities, and as this person was speaking before me, Matt, you know, we want to build quality homes, which includes safety and avoiding, you know, petroleum products, which Mayfield Place was, was really built with a lot of petroleum and concrete and a lot of toxins. So I just really want to encourage that some of you city council members, for data points and experience, please refer to Mayfield Place when you want to really get some factual information about the last, the very most recent, very low-income housing complex that was completed in the city of Palo Alto, aside from Wal-Mart coming up. Okay, and that's not open yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comments for items that are not otherwise on the agenda, and so we will now move into the consent calendar. I just want to point out to colleagues in the public that there is a supplemental report for item number six that's at our places, and for the public, it's a linked supplemental report under item six, under the electronic agenda. And do we have members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar?
Mayor Burt, we do not have any raised hands.
Okay. Councilmember Cormac?
I'd like to register a no vote on item six.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois?
I'd like to pull item number four.
Councilmember Stone?
Like to pull item four as well?
Councilmember Tanaka?
I want to pull four as well, and no on seven.
No on seven. Okay. Okay, so item four will be polled. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, given the relationship between item number four and your action item number nine, we'd suggest that those be heard concurrently.
Okay, so item number four will be conjoined to item number nine when we hear that shortly. And so would the clerk please call the roll with no votes recorded by Councilmember Cormac on seven and Councilmember Tanaka on, excuse me, Cormac on six and Tanaka on seven.
Did you move consent?
Sorry, yes.
I'll move consent.
I will second it. Now we can vote.
Then item four is polled with three, right? Should be noted in the motion.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes, would I please note that item four has been pulled from consent?
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsef?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
And perhaps just for the record, if I might, clerk, the motion, I believe, should read, approve agenda items number three through seven, except four.
Thank you.
All right, we can now move on to city manager comments. Mr., pardon me. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cormac, you can speak first to your no on six, and then Councilmember Tanaka.
I continue to be unable to make the findings that it is unsafe for us to meet in person, and I think that's been, you know, there's even more evidence of that based on the change in the county health officer's instructions.
And Councilmember Tanaka on item seven.
Thank you. So item seven is the approval of $150 million limit for the city manager to purchase natural gas. And first of all, you know, this is 15% of our total billion-dollar budget. That means everything, right? Not just their general fund, but everything, so 15%. So this is a humongous item. This is bigger than, you know, probably several agendas worth of budget approvals. And so I personally don't think something this big should be on consent. But with that said, when I read this, some of the issues I have with this is that there's no boundaries on what kind of pricing is okay. It's just blank, so it's a bit of like a blank check. The second thing is there's no quantity boundaries. And the third thing is I couldn't find any recent, I found up to 2014, but recent gas quantity usage, right? So you think that would be a very useful thing to know in terms of is $150 million over the next seven years a reasonable budget limit or not? And in fact, if you look at the gas usage that we can see up to 2014, you'll notice that since the year 2000, the city's actually done a very good job in reducing a lot of natural gas that we've been using. In fact, it averages about 3% per year. So every, every, every year, we use, we use about 3% less natural gas than we did the year before, which is, which is great, right? Because we're reducing the carbon in our city. But if you look at the approval that we have here on item seven, it goes from $14 million a year to $25 million a year. So those conscious, the usage is going down, but the budget approval is is 25 million instead of 14 million. So this represents a 75% increase. So it's a very, very big increase, given the fact that our gas usage has been dropping. And then if you factor in the fact that, I think, 36, at least $36 million of that $100 million budget wasn't spent the past seven years, it means that the budget approval on seven is actually 173% higher than the actual usage, right? So it's, it's almost double, right? That's a lot. But then if you factor in that our usage has been dropping 3% per year, and you factor that into the, the dollar limit here, it's 450% higher if you factor that in. So it's, it's basically a complete blank check. Not to say, of course, the city manager's going to spend money unwisely, but I think there should be some limits, otherwise, what's the point of doing this? If the limit's so astronomically high. Now, you might say, well, natural gas prices are gonna, are increasing, or forecasted to increase, and so you can, and so you can factor that in, and you factor in that natural gas prices might double, right? This is just forecast, it might not, but let's say it does. Then it's still like 200-plus percent higher. So to me, you know, when we're having this record-high budget this year, where we're asking our citizens and our constituents to do a transfer tax and, or increase our transfer, and also to do a business tax, I think we owe it to really scrutinize what's being spent, especially when it's triple-digit millions, right? Triple-digit loans. We don't, we don't approve something triple-digit loans every night, and just, and tonight we do. And yet we get very little airtime on this. So I think, before we ask others, before we ask our constituents to open up their wallets, I think it's important that we sharpen our pencils, that we do our homework, that we, that we try to make sure that we have good guardrails, because I don't think item seven represents good- Because I don't think item seven represents good guardrails when you're 200%.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay, thank you.
Pushing five minutes. All right. So now we will move to city manager comments. Mr. Shikata.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. All right, Mr. Nguyen, thank you very much for your help with that. Let's see, go back to the second slide, please. Great, thank you. All right, go through this fairly quickly just to provide our weekly update on pandemic-related issues. I think really indication of the continuing stabilization of our conditions. We simply are providing a couple of pointers here. One, on individuals' ability and resources to identify exposure risks through any circumstances you find yourselves in related to risk of transmission, whether it be in contact with infected persons or in situations such as outdoor activities versus indoor. We have abbreviated a web link here to the CDC. It's bit.ly/cdcexposurerisks. And I would note that that address is case sensitive. And then simply providing our updated dates for regular testing through the county, this is PCR testing. And also that the county itself is continuing to provide additional resources at SCCFreeVax.org. Next slide, please. All right, then looking forward to a few notable events, all positive here. One, artists in residence, the next artist in residence event upcoming will be this Saturday at Cumberley Studio or Cumberley Campus, really, Community Center Campus with the, as a part of the Artist Studio Program. Let's see, artist Harumo Sato will be inviting community members to participate in the drawing on a large canvas or paper, I take it in this case, and nice activity for kids. Next slide, please. Then also this weekend, from Friday to Sunday, a pop-up circus performance. So instead of art or graphic art, this is performance art. And an opportunity at a few locations, Gamble Garden on Friday, at the University Avenue Farmers Market on Saturday, and the California Avenue Farmers Market on Sunday. Another program under our Public Art Program, Art Lift 2022 activities and opportunity to participate again for kids and kids at heart. Next slide, please. Then next week, we have a community meeting upcoming related to the city's housing element update. This is next Thursday at 6:00 PM related to environmental review of the proposed housing element. Then the document itself with the draft housing element is expected to be released in early November, so November 7th. Listed here as the date for release, then for a 30-day public comment period and a follow-up council Planning Transportation Commission Joint Study Session later in November on the 28th. Again, just a few dates to note, recognizing that this does have a constrained schedule in the steps forward. Next slide, please. Also want to note next Saturday, the, there'll be further discussion of this this evening, I suspect, what we're calling the Making Better Choices in Your Home Workshop on options and resources for electrification at residential properties. And we'll have some tremendous resources and examples that residents can take a look at and experts to speak to with regard to options for electrifying your home. Next slide, please. And let's see, want to note some upcoming dates. Actually, I thought I had a slide on here, but may have missed it for the town hall meeting that will actually be happening next Thursday. That's on the 12th, I'm sorry, that's Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 12th of October, in addition to these upcoming council meetings. This will be in the Barron Park neighborhood and a few surrounding neighborhood areas. And so we'll provide some additional information on that shortly. But then looking forward to the upcoming council items, next meeting will be on the 17th, recognizing that next Monday is a holiday. So on the 17th, we'll have the pre-screening of the Creekside Inn site development proposal, as well as the green building and reach code updates for city council consideration. Next meeting will be on the 24th of October, where we're expecting next round of discussions on the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan, as well as next steps on the parklet program, both permanent parklet standards, as well as the status report on the interim standards. Then following the 24th, I would note that you do not have a council meeting scheduled on October 31st. So happy Halloween for those that will be participating in that. And then the following meeting will be on November 7th. And so we've got a few items here, both for the 7th and beyond, with the Economic Development Study Session planned, as well as next rounds of your housing element update, the annual, or actually biannual, study session with the city's independent police auditor. And as noted earlier, a joint meeting with the Planning and Transportation Committee Commission with regard to the housing element, a little duplication there. And I believe that covers my slides. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you. So we will now proceed to item nine, which is continuation of the item that we commenced on last Tuesday. It's an acceptance of sustainability and climate action plan goals and key actions, review of the proposed reach code changes, adoption of resolutions adopting an advanced heat pump water heater program guidelines, creating and funding electrification reserves, amending the city's policy on the use of cap and trade allowance reserves, and adopting a carbon neutrality goal, and approval of budget amendments in the electric fund, the gas fund, and the general fund, and direction to staff to amend the 2022 utilities legislative guidelines. And then we also have now a discussion of the approval of a professional services agreement regarding our heat pump water heater pilot program, energy and water efficiency and electrification programs. And Director Eggleston, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and council, and we're pleased to be here to continue this item from last week. I did want to note that last Thursday, we published a brief supplemental memo that addressed a few questions raised by council members during last week's session, which we weren't able to fully answer at that time. And as you noted, Mayor, we'll now be discussing item four from the consent calendar about the synergy contract. And so on that, Assistant Director Jonathan Abenshine from Utilities is here and has a few slides to briefly outline that recommendation.
Thank you, Director Eggleston. Do we have the slides available? Well, I'll just start by saying that the contract we're asking you to approve tonight with synergy has three parts, two that extend existing programs and one that implements our new program, the advanced, the turnkey installation feature of our advanced heat pump water heater pilot program. As far as the word turnkey, apparently for this type of installation service, turnkey means a service where an agency contracted, contractor goes into someone's home or building and does the installation, but that person pays some portion of the costs, direct installation. They also do direct installation programs, which involve no cost to the customer. The advanced heat pump water heater pilot program is a turnkey program. The, and can I have the next slide, please? So the two current programs being extended are our multifamily residential program and our income qualified program, that's on the next slide. Both the multifamily and income qualified programs are focused on both energy efficiency and water efficiency, and we've had them for a very long time. But we've included building electrification measures in our contract, so we have options if we want to expand those programs later to include some level of electrification. That would likely need a budget amendment, we'd come back to you. Both of the existing programs, the funding for the efficiency elements are included in the FY 2023 budget, so no amendment is needed to continue these programs. But of course, the advanced heat pump water heater pilot does require budget changes and other approvals that we were discussing at the last meeting and are discussing again tonight. Can I get the next slide, please? So the income qualified program does have one electrification feature for implementing our advanced heat pump water heater pilot program. So we are offering no-cost installations for income qualified customers. And where we do those installations, they'll take place under this income qualified direct installation program. I have on the slide here the action we're requesting you to take tonight. The total not-to-exceed budget for the pilot, for the contract is 7.7 million over a three-year term. Most of that is related to the advanced heat pump water heater pilot program. That's all I have.
Thank you. So let's go ahead and treat this item as one that's discreet from the balance of our discussion tonight. And do council members have any questions? Oh, Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I can't figure out what this in- income qualified. Can you please define that a little bit more for me, income qualified?
So it's folks that qualify for a higher or less costly level of service based on their income level, usually as a percentage of Santa Clara median income.
And this is for people who own their own home?
So I'm going to turn to my, turn to my team on that. It's not just for people who own their own homes, but there does need to be cooperation with the property owners, and we have relationships with a lot of especially affordable housing.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you saying you were turning to your colleagues on that? Or did I misunderstand?
If there's more detail, would you like more detail on that, on the income qualified programs? If so, I would turn to Lisa Benatar.
So Vice Mayor Koo, did that meet your, answer your question adequately? Or did you want any additional information?
Actually, if there's more information, I'd be happy to hear it. Thank you so much.
Great, so I'll call for Lisa Benatar, Utilities Program Services Manager.
Good evening. Whoops, do I need to turn this on? Are we good? Vice Mayor Koo, can you please, what additional information were you interested in regarding the, was it regarding the income qualification?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. So currently, we have a rate assistance program called RAP for our, for income, for low-income residents. And they call, our customers qualify for RAP with, I believe, I might need to call on Scott Melber, but I believe it's state, state and federal qualifications, it's on our website, for the rate assistance program. And so we use the same qualifications for our current residential energy assistance program.
I appreciate that, you know, I think that, you know, as we're moving forward with electrification and changing over, so that we're more client protective of our climate, we want to, you know, further the equity part of it and make sure that people can qualify and that we're not leaving them out. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is we are launching this program with a single provider. If over the course of the next three years, we have additional local providers who are available and perhaps more cost-effective, does this program allow addition of other providers of the insulation services, for example, for the heat pump water heaters?
There isn't anything in the contract that would, that would prevent that.
Great. And and then I, I note on the bottom of page two, a real focus on the targeted marketing. And I just would encourage us to, one, we've had discussion, including last week, about how critical this marketing is going to be. And we actually have some real experts in the community at Stanford, both on marketing and in particular messaging and marketing on climate initiatives. And this is going to be not only important, but it's, marketing isn't our core function as a government. And so I'd really encourage us to leverage our resources through some of those other experts who may be available to us. And as we've seen, we have a lot of experts in this community and they aren't necessarily people who are available to serve on a board or commission or run for city council. But if we have something that is, really taps into their particular expertise and they can provide a real value, they're very often willing to step up and contribute. And I think this may be one of those occasions. And so I think that completes our questions on this item. Will, is, is the next, Director Eggleston, what do you have sequentially on this?
Well, I think there were some slides from the ad hoc that we thought you might want to walk through.
Great.
Then we could revisit very briefly what the recommendation is for this evening and any.
Yeah, why don't, since we're, you know, six days later, if you could just recap for everybody the, the main thrust of the evening, and then I can go ahead and proceed on those slides, and then we can hear from members of the public.
Sure, so just at a high level, last week, we went over the proposed goals and key actions for the overall SCAP. And so we're recommending that council accept those, which allows us to begin the sequel analysis and the step of, steps to essentially finalizing the SCAP. Last week, we also went over the reach code items, and we're not proposing an action here, but if there's further questions on that, that would be in alignment.
And that date for action would be?
The action date is October 17th. And then there's the heat pump water heater program. So with that, there were multiple resolutions that go along with that and kind of a slew of budget actions. And then as we're hearing these items together, the approval of the synergy contract that Jonathan was just talking about. And then the last two actions are approval of a resolution that establishes a new carbon neutrality goal for the city, as well as setting a new legislative priority for supporting workforce additions in the electrification area. So that's the kind of bag of items we have for the season.
Thank you. So, oh, Councilmember DuBois.
And then I guess just, and then adding on consent item four.
Yeah, he mentioned that.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, okay, great. So what I can do is go through the slides that are attempting to summarize lessons learned and recommendations from the ad hoc committee. And as we went through this process over the last year and a quarter of meetings, we, we had a whole slew of community experts and deep dives that we did into a number of aspects. We encountered some hurdles. hurdles to the entire program and early on, we we had a a flag raised by our utility operations that identified that based upon the path we've been on. Utility operations had deep concerns on being able to keep up with the increased need to upgrade capacity and make more modern our pole mounted transformers, primarily in residential neighborhoods. And this is next slide, please. So this really raised the issue. I'm sorry, next one yet. The capacity of our local art and statewide utility infrastructure and the capacity of renewable supplies. So it's really two parts we came to recognize. First is on the state level. How we we currently have a program where the state of California, through their all the different utilities are increasing the proportion of our electric portfolio that is from renewable supplies and non carbon greenhouse gas emitting supplies. And the question is really, how are we going to move, continue to move with a greater proportion of that electricity being carbon free and an increase in demand on electricity because of electrifying transportation and buildings going forward over the coming decade and more. And so what we came to understand is that first, on the state level, the state is very focused on both the reliability and resiliency of the infrastructure and and making sure that has the capacity to accommodate those additional needs. In recent weeks, we had what was a near statewide blackout after a year before that we had had, or I should say rolling brownouts. There was a communications breakdown at the state level on whether a rolling brownout was needed, and we had locally, we followed direction from the Northern California Power Authority and began to have deliberate brownout in some areas, and then that was immediately corrected and understood that it was a a warning of a potential imminent brownout. And and in reality, we didn't have any brownouts or blackouts in the state that were resulting from that extreme heat wave and a record demand on electricity because the state has invested in last year, really over the last two years, large investments in battery storage systems primarily. They brought online three gigawatts of storage, and my understanding is they have another gigawatt in the coming year, and that was the difference between the state having enough supply and an extreme heat wave and not doing so. And so the state is moving in that direction, and that's that's really what our understanding is of of a number of measures, plus the governor has announced that an intention to keep the Diablo Nuclear Power Plant online for an additional period of time as we go through this transition to a stable renewable grid. And then on the local level, we have a different set of needs. We have the physical infrastructure, as I mentioned, of primarily pole mounted transformers in residential neighborhoods. And rightly, our utility staff has identified utilities operations engineering have identified some real choke points in that. The we were seeing so many upgrades needed in these pole mounted transformers that our utilities department is having difficulty keeping up even before we accelerate our home electrification and continue to proceed with electrification of our transportation system, primarily through electric vehicles. And we're seeing these problems ahead of almost any other city because we have the highest electric vehicle adoption rate in the country. We have had that for some time and in all likelihood are still at that pace. And we are beginning home electrification programs. So we've run into the challenges that other cities will be facing in the coming years as they go through similar adoption cycles to what we've done. And our utilities department wants to do a systematic approach to upgrading the system. They've already provided a report and a preliminary plan on that as they're entering into a a deeper analysis of those requirements, and then in the coming years, a full implementation. But near term problems are availability of transformers. There is a huge backlog of over a year on being able to obtain the transformers. And then a a real problem with the person having adequate personnel to perform these tasks, both at the high voltage line workers who install them and the utilities engineering staff where that power supply engineers, we we are currently at 50% of our authorized staffing level is my understanding, and these are real problems. We will later be talking about how we're going to address them. But these were areas that we had to understand more deeply and figure out how to overcome. So initially, when utilities engineering identified this problem, they said it's the home electrification that is really triggering these needs predominantly. And as we looked at this issue more, we came to recognize that we really haven't electrified that many homes yet. It didn't add up that it was really the home electrification to date that was doing it. But what we have done is install many, many home electric vehicle chargers. And that's what's really to date been triggering this transformer problem and a choke point in our whole electrification. On top of that, as we dove into it and experts identified for us, most manufacturers of electric vehicles, when we go and buy an electric vehicle manufacturer or the sales office is recommending what are called high voltage level two chargers. Level two means it's 240 volt chargers. A level one is 120. And these rapid chargers are 480 or even higher. That's a level three chargers. So at home, we can have a level one charger out of a 120, which is kind of that slow trickle charger or various level twos, but level twos come in different amperages. So what really matters is the wattage that is the amps times the volts there. And these high amperage level two, 50 or 60 amp level twos are what manufacturers are suggesting that we use because that way we can come home and charge an EV in just a matter of hours. But in reality, modeling shows that we rarely need to do that. And that most of us are installing chargers. What we were recommended to do to ease our range anxiety that are probably larger than most of us need. And that is exacerbating this very important choke point. And so that was another key lesson learned that we we need to look at how we contend with right sizing of these EV chargers and a program to do that initially through education, because I think overwhelmingly, the populace who is installing EVs are the ones who are trying to do the right thing. They have no idea that doing that might prevent their neighbor from being able to put in an adequate size EV charger, or for that matter, for them to be able to electrify their home. On top of that, these higher amp chargers, if you have a typical 200 amp panel at home and you have a 50 amp, that's 200 amp, 240 volt panel at home, which is kind of what most folks have. Older homes might have 100. If somebody's upgraded, they might have gone up above the 200. But most of us probably have 200 amp panels. That additional 50 amp charger is a quarter of all of our electricity feed from the street, and it often requires that there be an analysis of the load on the system, a delay in being able to install big charger sometimes, or the need to upgrade a panel at significant expense, all for something we may not have needed. So we have to figure out how to right size that. And the same guiding principles apply to a number of these home electrification appliances we found. And we have experts who came forward, and there's a real movement in the home electrification field that is called low wattage appliances. There are smaller, more efficient appliances that in many circumstances meet our needs, but they don't have the high amperage draw that might, again, trigger an upgrade to our electric panels at expense to us, expense to the city, time delays, all those things that can impede our electrification. And so I'm sorry, I should go ahead and go to the next slide. I think I've talked my way past that initial one. So I just I should have covered one other thing on the workforce shortage. Over the last decade or more, as PG&E has gone through many of its struggles, they have gone on a hiring spree for many of these specialized high voltage line workers and engineers and made it very difficult for us and other public utilities to compete with their their hiring and their wages. On top of that, once they hire away someone in this field and they often move them away from the Bay Area to locations with cheaper housing, it becomes exceedingly difficult for us to ever attract and rehire those people. And so our our salary structure needs to be competitive if we want to not only electrify, but if we simply want to be able to make sure that we retain our reliability and resiliency that are vital to the community. And so at the end, we will talk about recommendations that we have that we've I've had discussions with Actera, Senator Becker, other leaders about a statewide program to try to fill these gaps. Next slide, please. This was just on the what I alluded to before about the way in which the state has upgraded the energy story system. Many of us may be familiar with, this is Moss Landing. We've seen this for many decades. If we drive past it, a gas fired power plant that for many decades provided routine power to the state, then it became what's called a Peker plant. It only comes on when we really need this, and now it's being replaced by what was already the world's largest utility scale battery facility. And now the state is doubling its capacity. So this is a really massive trend is that, okay, we're we have this these issues on how we address our infrastructure, but what's the future of how are we going to get all these additional all this additional renewable electricity? We already have carbon neutral electricity, but if we're going to over the next decade, perhaps double or more the amount of electricity we use in this community because we go from buying gasoline at gas stations and buying natural gas for our buildings. That is going to have at least a doubling, they believe, in our electricity demand going forward. And what might that cost? Will there be enough of it? Those are really legitimate concerns, and fortunately, the answers are really positive. The we purchase what are called power purchase agreements where we contract with private suppliers who will put in a wind farm or a solar farm, and we go into an agreement either exclusively or in partnership with other agencies and purchase capacity of those new supplies. Many of those solar farms now come with their own battery storage on site, so they're a combination of solar plus storage. And the costs of these things have been falling drastically over the last decade. Solar has fallen, depending on the source, 80 or 90% in just the last decade alone. And the trend line continues to be downward so that the cost of those power purchase agreements has been declining and is projected to be lower yet in the future, even while we have battery storage at those sites. So the the answer appears to be that not only will we have the ability to buy the amount of new renewables that we need, but the cost of those contracts will probably be lower on average than our current supplies. Now, we'll also probably have higher transmission costs from the state to get it to our city. But the actual renewable costs will likely be lower, according to the experts. Next slide, please. So I touched on the the value of the low lot watt appliances to address or reduce the stress on our grid. We're still going to need to upgrade our whole local grid, but spread out over a decade. It's a very doable task and and not prohibitive in the cost. It's important for us to remember that in Palo Alto, say, when I came off the council in 2016, if I recall correctly, our rates were about 30% below PG&E. Pretty phenomenal and under recognized in the community. That's our residential utility rates. When I came back on almost two years ago, that had changed. We were 40% below. As of this year, it looks like with PG&E as very large rate increases and and Director Abencine, can you correct me if I get any of my stats wrong? Anything wrong so far?
You're talking about the difference between PG&E and Palo Alto? Yeah, no, I that's that's on point. Yep.
And were there other things off point?
What's that?
Were there other things off point?
No, no, I just I I I thought you were really focused on the on the rates there.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that you feel free to correct me if I get any of this wrong. So it looks like at the end of this year, PG&E's rates are going up very significantly, double digits, high double digits this year in the teens, and ours are going up modestly, and my ballpark is that we may be around 50% below PG&E by the end of this year. And that's phenomenal. And what that really means is that we're going to be able to invest in our system upgrade and still have extremely competitive rates versus virtually every other utility in the in the region. The only one that has comparable rates is Santa Clara. And they're in the same ballpark as us, often a few cents less, but in the same ballpark as we are. But another thing that came to our our attention as we are looking at the home electrification is that this is not only a climate change and environmental issue that methane in the home represents a very significant public health issue. And this has been underappreciated broadly. I think it's extremely important that our community come to understand that. I hope on the October 15 workshop that that'll be a prominent feature because a a meta study of various others, combining various studies, looked and the conclusion was that gas cooking in the home elevated the risk of childhood asthma by 42%. And I don't know any parent who would not be alarmed to learn that, and many of the parents I've spoken with have been essentially angry that they didn't know this as they raise their children in an environment that presented an elevated asthma risk and nobody was telling them. And that even pertains to elevated risk for adults and lifetime asthma risks. So those are really significant public health risks from methane in the home, most of all from cooking stoves, but not exclusively. Hot water heaters and furnaces also present high elevated risks. And it's it's from both the burning of the methane and the methane that escapes that isn't burned, and it's that combination of polluting. And it's that combination of pollutants from those two sources that contribute to this. And these, these areas are still, we're learning more, the experts are learning more steadily as we go along. One other point is that as we look at the home furnaces, next slide piece? As we look at home furnaces, we find two other benefits that are often overlooked in addition to the health impact. And that is, we all know when we have our gas furnaces and they turn on and they have a big blast of hot air and then they turn off and another big loud blast of hot air and they turn off. Heat pump furnaces are, are much more of a, a steady state flow and they're a more comfortable, higher quality home heating. And then lastly, we are seeing an increase, and we don't have good numbers on this, but an increase in the number of homes that are adopting air conditioning in large part, not just because we're having hotter periods, but the biggest reason is that in the same periods when we have heat waves, we're having our mega fires in the state, sometimes nearby. And what do we do when we have a fire? We close the windows. But what do we do in a heat wave historically? We'd open our windows if we didn't have an HVAC or air conditioner because we're in a fairly mild climate. Most of us don't have air conditioning. And so now we have a real dilemma and people are starting to buy air conditioners. Good news is that the same heat pump furnaces that are highly efficient, energy efficient at heating our homes typically have the capability to function two ways as home cooling as well. So when we convert our homes from gas furnaces to heat pump furnaces, we get healthier homes, we get more comfortable homes and we get summer cooling if we need it, especially during mega fires. So I mentioned that the EVs are currently placing stresses on our infrastructure system and we have ways that we can address that, we believe, by really principally through education. We may be needing to figure out other ways to do this. But the other discovery that experts have pointed out to us, and there's increased recognition of this in the field. Even there, I think there was a recent article in the, I don't know, LA Times or New York Times, I can't recall. And this concept is now becoming mainstream, which is that there are two big factors about EVs that present opportunities in the future while they present problems in the near term. When we plug them in at home at night, if we come home from work and this is an average, some people now are working from home, but those who come home from work and plug in their, their electric vehicles tend to do it during what's called the peak load period. That's what stresses the transformer. It's the peak load. The transformer doesn't care how much electricity we're using in the middle of the night. It cares when that demand is highest and that's what could trigger blowing a transformer. So when we, we charge our vehicles, we come home and plug them in in a peak load, we create a new higher peak demand. That also is not when we're generating the most renewable power. We now are most of all solar renewable power in the state, secondarily wind renewable power. That's all during the day. And now some of the vehicles now have automatic charging capabilities. So you can program them and figure out when you want to charge them. But we really are still seeing a peak load demand in a time that stresses the transformer capacity and is not when we're having renewables generated. And for our future, when we'll have variable rate pricing after we have our smart meter program, we will have variable rates like the rest of the state generally has. And that means that when power is most plentiful, it will be cheapest. When they're, it's most in demand, it'll be most expensive. And what that results in is we're going to want to charge our electric vehicles primarily during the day when it's the greenest power and the cheapest power. And the future of EVs, and they're already, the vehicles being sold with this capability, is what's called two-way EV charging. Some of it is for, they call it vehicle to home, where you use it on yourself, or vehicle to grid, where you can actually sell it back in the grid and when power is expensive. Those vehicles are already coming on the market to enable that, but the batteries in today's vehicles don't have the capability to do all that many charge cycles without making your battery run out too many, too soon. When you, you hear that your electric vehicle may last for two hundred thousand miles or whatever, that's based upon just charging it and uncharging it for your driving. So right now we can use those vehicles with two-way charging in an emergency when we have these, these periods where we are being asked to reduce our power. But within the next few years, the new next generation of EV batteries will have the capability to do both functions. And we can charge during the day at work and, or even at home when renewables are there, maybe our own solar on our roof. And then at night, if we choose to, we can save on our bills by using some of that capacity. We can plug it in on our, a program on our phone and say, go ahead, use thirty percent of the capability in my electric vehicle to reduce my evening costly electric power consumption. So these EVs that today are creating some challenges, in the next few years, they're going to be the solution. And when we look at the need for a really stable grid system and those utility scale battery systems that we looked at, those are nothing in comparison to the amount of battery system that we will have in the aggregate in our vehicles. That system far outweighs orders of magnitude greater than what we have today in those utility scale batteries. So these electric vehicles are going to provide a huge new function. And that goes into part of one of the last recommendations I'll touch, the end, which is the different parts of a need for us to have a real strategic plan on electric vehicles that tries to put this together. We've had, our staff has led in electric vehicle charging, just as our city has led in electric vehicle adoption. But the future is going to accelerate on this and a strategic plan to knit together these aspects that I was talking about is important. Next slide, please. So we're almost at the end here. So one of the other things that we've come to recognize is that we're, we have this home hot water heater program that we think will be able to be expanded to other home appliances on end of life with the, the real key thing is we don't want people to install a new gas-powered appliance. Because then they'll have that for the next ten or twenty years continuing to, to use that gas or that at some point in the future, as the state mandates otherwise, they'll, they'll have to retire that while it's still operational. So what we really want right now in our whole program is make sure that we don't have folks putting in inefficient, unhealthy gas-powered appliances when we should be transitioning to electric right now. The same thing applies to commercial buildings to a great degree. The area that is, appears to be most cost-effective are what are called roof-mounted gas packs. And these are heating and air conditioning systems like in this picture. And studies have shown that they are already cost-effective and that's one of the things that we discussed. While we want right now and this year to have a very focused effort on the heat pump water heater program that can then scale otherwise, we need to begin the process this coming year of developing a similar program so that commercial buildings do the same thing. And frankly, it's, it's also a shared responsibility that businesses should keep pace with what we're doing in the residences. We have an issue though, on our staff capacity. We have, in our utility staff, not only the, the operation side of those high voltage people and the engineers there, but in all the program side, we are expanding our programs in this city. And we're doing so as one of the real leading cities and we're actually breaking new ground, which means like on this heat pump water heater program, we have to learn from our experiences and adapt over this next year. We don't know all the bugs that are going to be in here, but that's why we're, we're doing this on a pilot and where it's going to be a, a fluid and dynamic process. So we'll get better and better at it. But somehow we need to begin the process of developing a similar program on the commercial side. That means we're going to need to have additional resources, both on our staff and be able to leverage resources through experts in the community, experts in other utilities that have already been looking at this and otherwise. So we have to figure out how to do this, but it's really important that we do it. So that is our, really our lessons learned. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, we have some recommendations. One is already in the staff report and this has a modification to it. So what we've come to understand is since we adopted our eighty-thirty goal, eighty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, that was leading edge and we are further along than almost any other city on actually getting there. And yet we're behind schedule. But we are a real leader in how far along we are in this progress. But what has happened the last few years is that cities and the state and nations have gone into a, an additional goal, which shouldn't be instead of our eighty-thirty goal, it supplements it. And that's what's called carbon neutrality. And the state California Air Resources Board, CARB, has developed their own definitions of how do you, what constitutes carbon neutrality? And in actuality, it's a combination of carbon reductions, that eighty percent goal we have by 2030. And then carbon sequestration, things that we do to capture carbon and carbon offsets, which we actually already do. For all of our natural gas, we're paying for carbon offsets today. We don't count them as carbon reductions in our city, but we're already paying for them and the, the cost is not exorbitant. So we had talked about and the staff report and the recommendation is actually for a 2035 carbon neutrality goal. As we looked at this more, not only are cities like Nextdoor and Menlo Park have already adopted a 2030 carbon neutrality goal, but we're on the path already to be able to do this. So if we achieve a seventy to eighty percent reduction in our carbon emissions by 2030 and if we only continued to purchase offsets comparable to what we're already purchasing to offset our gas, we already hit the 2030 goal through those means. Now we want to move toward more sequestration. We want to have more reduction. But actually hitting the goal of neutrality by 2030 is compared to almost anybody else, much more doable for Palo Alto. And why do we want to do this? Well, this goes back to one of the things we discussed last Tuesday, which is if we get to complete elimination of, of our greenhouse gases and we try to measure that on a, a global scale, we can't measure it. We're just that small. But like other leading cities and some of the leading countries like Denmark, they recognize that the, the most valuable role that, that they and we play is working out work plans and templates for everybody else to follow as they in just the next few years start running into the EV adoption rates and the building electrification that we're doing. And they right now are further behind and desperate for models and work plans so that they don't have to each reinvent the wheel or get held up as they say, well, now we're ready to step it up to what Palo Alto and Menlo Park and other cities have done. It's ready and there will be different models. Now it won't be a one size fits all, but that's why we and others who have slightly different models will all contribute and have potentially a highly leveraged impact. That was the same thing that happened when we adopted carbon neutral electricity in 2013. We achieved it in 2016. This was a big deal. It incentivized what are now regional, the, what are called the community choice aggregators, which are these joint power authorities that are buying their own renewables for all of San Mateo County, much of Santa Clara County, even other cities nationally and internationally said, wait a minute, they did that and they did it with cost-effectively at lower cost than the investor-owned utility that had browner power. They did it far cheaper. We want to do that. And that's the kind of impact that why what we do really matters. And it's commendable that we're going to be able to take pride in what, that we've reduced our emissions. But if we want to really have an impact, it's how we have an impact on others. And that's why setting a carbon neutrality goal elevates what we've done and has given prominence and more attention to our accomplishments. And frankly, it's another important goal that we should be doing. Next slide, please. So I already mentioned the recommendation that we have an EV strategic plan in addition to this HVAC commercial plan. And so the recommendation that we have here is that the council look at giving direction to staff to, to go forward with working on those plans this year. We won't be able to implement them this year, but we will need them to identify what sort of resources they need to do, to accomplish that because we can't merely add more workload on to the existing very committed staff that we have here. Great news is that our electric utility rates allow us to afford additional investments and still be extremely competitive. Probably even if we increased our investments, we will then be even a, a lower percentage of PG&E in the following years because their cost increase just keep going up faster than ours. So there's a lot of room to do that. And then lastly, we have the question we've, we've had, the, the SCAP that was appointed a year and a half ago. We got really launched a year and a quarter ago. This council SCAP committee, I think it's recognized has really helped put a great focus on these efforts by the community, by the staff, through giving support for the staff, for the resources that they need to accomplish what we all are saying we need to do. And so the council will have a need to discuss and consider, how do we go forward? Is it a continuation of the current ad hoc? Would it have a different focus? Would it be a permanent council committee? Would it be a, a, a green ribbon task force of community members or a, a permanent board or commission? So that's going to be one of the questions of the council. But the important thing is that we figure out how to retain the focus and the momentum that we've established over the last year or so. So I know that's been a long report, but we, we really have learned a great deal through this process and wanted to share what we've learned with the community and have that help set the groundwork going forward. So if it's okay, I guess at this time we could now hear from the public. And we had speakers last week. We've encouraged speakers to preferably speak only at one of the meetings, but you're welcome to sign up to speak. And city clerk will show our, our lineup shortly. And anybody in the audience need to fill out a speaker card if you wish to speak tonight. All right. So we blow that up just a little bit. Thank you. Our first speaker is Mel Chronic here in person to be followed by Brett Anderson. Welcome. Our first speaker is Mel Chronic here in person to be followed by Brett Anderson. Welcome.
My name is Mel Chronic. I'm a Palo Alto resident and I'm a member of a team from three fifty Palo Alto. A volunteer group focused on actions to combat climate change. This past spring, even before learning of the heat pump program that is being formulated by the city. Our team applied for and was granted support from the county of Santa Clara. To help jumpstart our eighty by thirty goal of reducing greenhouse gases. And by engaging volunteers to canvas homes, answer questions and drop off literature. We proposed to help educate residents about the desirability of replacing natural gas. Hot water heaters with heat pump water heaters. I'm here tonight to encourage the city council. To pass the heat pump initiative. That. Mayor Bird described. We believe that our efforts. Will complement actions of the city aimed at explaining the benefits of heat pump water heaters to residents and to our environment. Recently, to test some of our concepts, we used social media. To explain to a few Palo Alto neighborhood groups. The advantages of heat pump water heaters and to understand the attitudes of residents towards such a turnkey program. I personally contacted the nine hundred and fifty people on the Crescent Park Neighborhood Association mailing list. And we gave a terse explanation of what we were doing and asked a simple question. Such a turnkey program were available, would you be interested in it? You need more information to be interested in it, or are you just not interested in it? And we found, and this is rough and the numbers need to be improved, but it's about an equal number of people in each of those three categories. And responses. You know, we got the names of those who were positive or wanting more information. And we'd be happy to provide those to the city when it's ready to roll out its program. Thank you very much for your support and I hope you get behind the program.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brett Anderson to be followed by Bruce Hodge. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this item. Mostly I'd like to just thank. Staff and the ad hoc committee for bringing all of this, these good proposals to the fore here tonight. As part of the carbon free Palo Alto team. I was in many meetings over the years with, with staff. With Jonathan and Christine Tam and Christine Wong. With Brad and Phil and, and many others and have a lot of meetings with, with council members over the years. So I'm. Quite gratified that we're looking at a set of proposals that are so. Well put together and focused on deep decarbonization, which is the biggest and most urgent need. That we need for climate action in Palo Alto. And thank you Mayor Bird for. I guess pushing as hard as possible to get the ad hoc formed and, and focusing in on these, these important issues. I hope we can follow through on some of these proposals. Especially the advanced water heater proposal with the actions that relate to this on electrification that are in the SCAP. There are good ideas there about working on the rates as well as extending this to other devices. Like heating and air conditioning, not just the, the heat pump water heater opportunity. And it also hope that we can invest. Well and heavily into the marketing and communication for this program because we do still need to communicate to folks that. We are going to completely electrify our buildings and we have to get off gas within the next ten years. And. That's part of the plan now that's pretty much set at the state level and I think at, as formed at the Palo Alto utility level. So recently the CPUC. Ended all subsidies for new gas line extensions because they recognize that. Gas is going away. They called those types of investments stranded assets. So they've kind of formally admitted that. The timeline is twenty forty five for California. We don't have that much time and I think we are more focused on what, what we can do locally. On a science based goal of the next ten years. So I'm glad to see that we're. Introducing a groundbreaking program to fit with our groundbreaking goal that we set in two thousand and sixteen of eighty by thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Hodge to be followed by Debbie Maitels. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Hodge from carbon free Palo Alto and honorable mayor, city council members. It's been a long journey to get to this point and, but carbon free Palo Alto is very pleased in particular with the staff proposal. For the advanced heat pump water heater program, pilot program. It echoes many of the design aspects that our organization has long advocated. And strikes an excellent balance between public and private capitalization. Of the first wave of climate friendly devices in Palo Alto buildings. Approval of this program should be a slam dunk. There are really no good reasons for voting against this proposal. I want to call out John Imanchin and his staff. In particular for their primary role in bringing this program designed to fruition. Well done. And thanks also to Pat Burt for kickstarting this recent effort. We're hopeful that a more agile process can be established to create and ideate. Establish to ideate and implement the necessary policies and programs to put for, put us on a path to the eighty by thirty goal. And that citizen expertise can remain a key aspect of this process. We look forward to a continued collaboration with staff and city council members to ensure a successful rollout of the program. And the crucial next steps that are, that need to be taken in other areas. Please vote yes for a better future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Debbie Maitels to be followed by Matt Schlegel. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Debbie Maitels, like two eight two four Lewis Road. I'm a forty five year resident of Palo Alto and a member of the steering committee for three fifty Palo Alto. As you probably know, our organization is really supportive of the diligent actions and efforts of the city staff and the SCAP committee. So that we can really prepare, they worked really hard to prepare the climate action plan for the council's approval tonight. And we as an organization are really eager to roll up our sleeves and help make the proposed heat pump water heater program a success. As Mel Chronic earlier mentioned, our group has received a ten thousand dollar grant from the county of Santa Clara. To engage Palo Alto homeowners in a door to door canvas to educate them about the benefits of planning ahead. To purchase a new heat pump water heater before they have a failure of their old one. Not only will they avoid an emergency of no hot water, but they will improve their indoor air quality, have a more energy efficient appliance. And take an important step in reducing the use of climate disrupting methane preliminary online survey to determine the community's awareness. And enthusiasm for the heat pump water heat program. Altogether, we had a hundred and forty responses. Which were gathered from notices that we sent out through the neighborhood associations, Nextdoor and our three fifty Palo Alto email list. Of that number, eighty two percent, one hundred and fifteen folks expressed a definite interest in ordering a water heater installation from CPAU. Twelve of them or nine percent said no and thirteen percent, another nine percent who were, you know, the reasonably cautious ones said, well, it depends or. We need more information. So basically we had eighty percent of the people responding saying, yes, this is a great idea. Among the negative comments we received, there was the one inevitable comment about, you know, we need to worry more about India and China emissions than our own GHGs. And another one said they would prefer a tankless model to stop water waste. And a few others said that they were not sure that our electrical grid can handle the load. So all these comments really pointed the need for more community education. And it's really good to see that one of the recommendations is that we should think about. Improving our marketing and engaging more community members and others in the community to work on that. We will share the full results of the survey in writing with the staff and with the council, but looking at the eighty two percent positive response. It's clear the community is behind the proposal for the heat pump program. And I really encourage you to vote for its approval tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Schlegel to be followed by Pete Bennett. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'd like to address a comment that council member Tanaka brought up last week. Which I thought was a very good point about asking for a sensitivity analysis. And he wants to know how much addition, emissions we can reduce per dollar spent. And he was, you know, very focused on this one dimension of the analysis, the, the money dimension. But I'd like to suggest that we think about two additional dimensions. The dimension of time and the dimension of human emotional response. The dimension of time is important. We're quickly running out of time to reduce our carbon emissions and avert complete climate breakdown. Because time is so important, we must prioritize short term emission reduction. Even if they are more expensive now than they may be in the future. Otherwise, we may not have a future. Then there's the dimension of emotions. How can we reduce emissions without evoking a strong negative reaction? So here's one example. There's no one that I know who has a brand attachment to their water heater. They have an attachment to hot water. But not whether they have the latest and greatest REEM device. So in considering solutions, we also need to look at the sensitivity. To the negative emotional reactions from the public. And pursue solutions that minimize those negative reactions and hopefully evoke some positive feelings. Like the positive feelings I feel when you all are taking action to reduce emissions in our community. So please consider all three of these dimensions when you conduct your sensitivity analysis. Money, how much emissions reduction per dollar spent, time, how quickly our emissions can be reduced. And emotional reaction, what will the public's emotional reaction, positive or negative be to any one of these actions? So it's not just about money, council member Tanaka. And I'd also like you to be sensitive to the fact that one day your kids will ask you. If you did everything possible in your power to minimize the consequences of climate crisis. So please be sensitive to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pete Bennett to be followed by Elizabeth Gardner. Welcome.
Greetings. This is Pete Bennett again. I thank you for letting me speak again. I'm impressed with what I'm hearing at your, at this. I learned quite a bit. I actually am a former consultant for AT&amp;T, GE Nuclear. And also PG&E. The only thing is, the incident I mentioned earlier. Is connected to my role at PG&E. I actually know the high performance engineer in charge of the fluid dynamics of the pipeline explosion. And I run a blog about what I've been through called PGE witness dot com. And I have another blog that's needs some help. It's called dead witness dot com. And I have a tragic story connected to PG&E. That apparently he's got a good PR job and you believe they're doing a great job. And I'm on the other end of unpaid bills. And ridiculous incidents of attempted murder and a whole lot of things like that. I've sat in the city council meetings of Walnut Creek, Concord, Lafayette, San Ramon, Danville, PG&E. The Public Utilities Commission's, I've made no progress in ten years. Okay, so my life is on the line, but I like what you're doing. It's good. Tell that to your chief, that the documents stolen from me. Were used to shoot out the transformers at the Metcalf station. Causing a power outage for over a hundred thousand people. And in two thousand and eighteen. The fire in paradise linked to my maps again. Nearly killed my family that lived in Holly Hills Mobile Home Park. I carry on a burden of eighty five people killed in connection to what I'm sharing with you tonight. I've talked to district attorneys. I've talked to the law firms. I have called the US Marshals about what happened with the PG&E. What are they called? Compliance with the. The conviction. Okay, Kirkland and Ellis did not let my name reach Judge Alsa. I run a blog called JudgeAlsa.com. I, I, you might think I'm a little perturbed. Being drained out of all my resources, all my funds, thrown into jail. Beaten up. Unpaid. And family murdered. It's a lot to bear for one person. You're doing a great job. I, I learned an awful lot tonight. There's some good ideas on the table. There's more that can be done. I'll say it like this, there could be an app for that. Be careful. It's a dangerous group of people. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Sasha and Sasha is going up next because she's nine years old and this is going to be late. Welcome.
My name is Sasha Renekac. I am a fourth grader at Fermetal Elementary. I'm here to tell you my story about littering. When I was in third grade, my friends and I started picking up trash around the school. The reason we did it was because we felt bad for the people that had to do it by themselves, especially the janitor. But the problem was it kept growing every day. In one day, we reached up to a thousand pieces of trash. People didn't care about littering. We were also playing around with it. People threw trash in plants. Sometimes people hid the trash while knowing they were littering. The trash was usually hot lunches or snacks. There's three important things of this problem. Some wrappers still had food that was wasted. It's fresh bacteria and germs and it is dangerous animals who can eat with plastic. There's simply too much to do. We needed more help. We tried to gather more people to help us. We reached out to the Pintable, Anu and the PTA. They wasn't enough. We didn't have enough power. We need more people and support. That's why I'm here tonight. There's lots of ways to support us. Lots of kids and people have amazing ideas. For an example this year, my friends and I are making an eco friendly Sharpie pen. We're trying to make a Sharpie pen without any bad chemicals. We would love to have more people to help us make it happen. There must be a ton of kids who have great ideas but need more support. We need someone that has more power and can bring all of us together. Please help us make the world a better place.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Gardner to be followed by Keith Bennett. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. That's Sasha. That is a very hard act to follow. Want to thank you for that presentation. That's beautiful. I am mystified here. The council is talking a lot about community. I hear a lot of comments about community. And right now, almost fifty percent of our residents in Palo Alto are renters. They might be renting for three thousand dollars a month, all the way up to thirty thousand dollars a month. And I'm not sure what the presentation on these heat pumps. There was kind of a, there's, there seems to be a misconnection here. They're not really sure how that's going to get implemented and how it's going to get started and. They brought in, you know, some of the affordable housing complexes or five oh one C threes that rent to low income. Families, but what we're missing here is, is the missing middle really. And so I'm just asking some question. How does this work with our nearly fifty percent of renters renters? We are definitely in a trifecta of crises right now. One top being housing. We are in a housing emergency climate, prevailing wages, the economy. Right now, I would also like to address that, you know, it's not only carbon gas that could be causing asthma. My son has asthma. We live on El Camino Real. And, you know, he's diagnosed with asthma because of all the pollution on El Camino Real. You know, he often has attacks. I also want to really address the all-electric Mayfield Place where we live came coming online in 2017. Right now, we have, my microwave is out. It's all electric. We have lots of power outages, power surges in the electrical outlets. We do not have one, not one EV charging station here. And we share this building with Vista and a restaurant, and they do not have EV charging. So I just want to really talk about this, also bringing in Denmark. We are far, far away from Denmark. And really, we just need to address an equity-based, carbon-neutral. Why not roll this thing out with 50% renters and 50% homeowners? I really take sort of a little bit of offense to being marginalized here when so many of us here as residents are renters. And I do not see a solid plan in place to roll this out. And many do not live in Alta or some of these other housing complexes. So please address that. I really would appreciate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Bennett to be followed by Lynn Chiappella. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Keith Bennett with Save Palo Alto's Groundwater. I certainly support reducing greenhouse gas emissions in Palo Alto. And this proposed program here seems like a good actionable step. The purpose of my speaking tonight is to encourage everyone listening to me to remember concrete and greenhouse gas emissions from concrete, and particularly the concrete from underground construction for basements and parking garages. And I know people here are interested in, some people here are interested in numbers, so I'll give you some. There is a proposal for 660 University Avenue to have two levels of underground parking. The second level of underground parking is needed for the office, not for the residential part of that complex. Now, the greenhouse, the concrete emits a lot of greenhouse. So when you put concrete in a building basement into a water table, you have to have enough concrete to keep the thing from floating like a boat. So this project at 660 University Avenue, for just the second level basement, will emit about 4,450 metric tons. That's the amount of concrete at 180 kilograms per ton of CO2, which is 800 metric tons of CO2. Now, according to the City of Palo Alto website, there were, for all residential emissions, were 68,826 metric tons in 2020, of which about 25% is used for hot water. Now, that's 90% of that is natural gas. So natural gas for hot water heating is about 14,500 metric tons of CO2. So this single basement will emit about 5% of the total CO2 emissions for all hot water in Palo Alto. That's a single basement. That doesn't include all the other basements that are being built. Low emissions concrete might reduce that by about 30%, but I'm encouraged you to also consider the very large impacts of underground construction that use concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Chiappella to be followed by Antonia. Welcome.
Lynn Chiappella, I have a couple of questions. On the number four, which I think was 7.7 million over three years. Do you have any numbers of or projections of how many conversions and installations that will actually accomplish? Or is it just out in space? We'll do our best. We'll do as many as we can. I would like to know if any estimates were, have been made as to results from this 7.7 million. The second question is, years ago, we were told as residents that Palo Alto would install smart meters at our homes and that there would be rate adjustments depending on the time of day that you used your electricity. Clearly, that never happened. And I wonder if it's just been dropped? Because that might make a difference if people actually paid more between 4:00 and 9:00 PM or saved money by doing whatever overnight, such as charging your car. So I would be very curious if anyone has crunched any numbers to see if if this is going to be a possibility down the road? Or are we all just going to willy-nilly use gas, electricity, water, whatever, anytime we want with no ramification in terms of our pocketbook? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Antonia to be followed by Theo Waltoke. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Toni Minion, and I'm a junior at Gunn and a member of the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. And I'm here tonight to advocate for the Heat Pump Water Heater Initiative, which is a critical step in meeting our SCAP goals. Now, as a student and a climate activist, I recognize the importance of electric water heaters in terms of reducing household greenhouse gas emissions. And as a community member and a child with respiratory issues, I find them crucial because I recognize their importance in terms of health. Household methane emissions from gas appliances are extremely harmful for lungs, especially in children. In addition to providing clean energy, heat pump water heaters can help with lung health by acting as household air conditioners and air purifiers, which is especially important in the status quo with wildfire smoke increasing each fall. Now, I understand that people may be concerned about Palo Alto's electric grid infrastructure, but installing only 1,000 heat pump water heaters is not enough to overwhelm our electrical grid. Most heat pump water heaters are moderately low wattage and do not cause high enough load demands to stress our electrical grid. In fact, by starting with this rather small initiative, we can begin the conversation around upgrading our grid in order to accommodate for future projects. We absolutely cannot allow the grid to stop us from implementing initiatives like this one. Instead, let's prioritize allocating resources for more electrification projects in the future. I stand here today because I know that the council cares about our community. So I'm asking you to look out for future generations and vote yes on this program and the other SCAP key goals and actions. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me. Thank you. Our next speaker is Theo Waltoke to be followed by Maya Perkash. Welcome.
Good evening, council members and everyone else who is here tonight. I'm Theo Waltoke, a junior and member of the Social Justice Pathway at Gunn High School. And I'm also a leader in the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. Today, I'm here to urge Palo Alto to move forward with the SCAP key goals and actions. Palo Alto has decreased emissions by 51% since 1990. We have set an example to other cities on how much of an impact we can make. We, as a city, have come very far since we first began addressing the climate crisis, but we have more to change. Palo Alto's goal is to achieve 80% emission reductions by the year 2030. And in order to do that, we must approve key goals in the SCAP. We have to approve them now so that city staff can begin the hairy process of implementing crucial but nuanced programs like electrification. These changes are vital because as Palo Alto reduces emissions, other cities will follow in our footsteps. The Heat Pump Water Heater Program, for example, will allow residents to easily and cost-effectively switch from gas heat pumps to electric ones. Questions the program has already sparked are just examples of many other conversations to come out about other forms of electrification and either other, and even other alternatives to water heating. The Heat Pump Water Heater Program is a great jumping off point, which will help us think about other ways to improve larger electrification initiatives down the road. There are other emissions-free ways of heating our homes, such as solar water heaters. The future this program stands for will be bolstered by this program and further the city's commitment to reaching carbon neutrality by 2030. Implementing heat pumps sets a precedent. The same goes for other SCAP key actions. As Palo Alto makes it easier for residents to switch from gas to electric appliances, we not only protect the climate, but open up the conversation to other ways of running our houses without burning fossil fuels and polluting the air we breathe daily. It is imperative that you approve the Heat Pump Water Heater Program as well as other actions in the SCAP, so that Palo Alto can reach the bold goal we have set out to achieve. We are all here today to protect our futures and to become a part of the climate conversation. So please bring us to the table. Let us set a precedent today together by approving these key goals and actions in the SCAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Maya Perkash to be followed by Anu Ramamurthy. Welcome.
Hello, council members. My name is Maya Perkash, and I'm a junior on the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition and Class Vice President at Gunn. Over the past year, I've learned how important Palo Alto's actions in climate are, not only for our city, but also for the examples we set as trailblazers for neighboring cities and California as a whole. Thus, I'm here to reaffirm the need for us to approve SCAP's key goals and actions and continue our climate efforts wholeheartedly. The climate crisis puts us on a very tight timeline. And right now, we have the opportunity to continue the great progress we've made in past decades. Approving these key goals and actions of the SCAP, particularly its carbon neutrality goal, its investment in electrification, and its heat pump water program are crucial to this progress because electrification serves as the next great hurdle to significantly reducing our emissions. The Heat Pump Water Heater Program is particularly vital as over 90% of Palo Alto homes are run on gas-powered water heaters. Facilitating the switch from appliances like these to carbon-neutral appliances is imperative to mitigating the impact that our city has on the environment. As someone who has lived here all my life and hopes to continue to enjoy this beautiful city into adulthood, I want to ensure that we're doing all we can to continue being sustainable. To move forward to implementation of these crucial policies, I encourage the council to pass the SCAP, and in the time that follows, implement the plan speedily. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anu Ramamurthy to be followed by Ian Irwin. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anu Ramamurthy. I moved to Palo Alto along with my family a couple of years ago from New York City. And I must say Palo Alto is one of the greenest cities that I've lived in, if not the greenest. I'm a climate change communicator. I've worked with businesses and governments on the issue for 15 years now. And I was one in an army of people who helped achieve the Paris Climate Agreement. I'm also a mom and the founder of Cat Kid Adventure, an organization that's dedicated to educating kids about climate change. And when I say kids, I mean kids like Sasha who are in elementary school, kids who are often overlooked in the climate change conversation, but are essential to the solution because they're going to be sitting where you are very soon. At Cat Kid Adventure, we believe that it's never too early to talk to kids about climate change, and we use fun and games to be able to do that. And we teach eco habits to kids at a young age, which is habits that are good for themselves as well as to the planet. In doing this, I've worked with schools, I've worked with Palo Alto Art Center and other organizations here. And I have to say that the community here is so charged and engaged on climate. And people are committed to taking action, and many people already are. I believe that the SCAP, when it is passed, will be very similar to the Paris Climate Agreement in that it will send a signal to people to act. It will send a signal to business leaders and to other policymakers, as well as citizens, teachers, parents, educators, all of them, that climate action is necessary. And with this collective action, I believe that Palo Alto can get further faster in its goals to decarbonize. And frankly, it will continue to be a great city to live in, if not greener than it already is. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ian Irwin to be followed by Cedric Pito de Laborjutier.
Yeah, my name's Ian Irwin. I live on the corner of Calpurn Home across the street from the women's club. Been a Palo Alto resident since 1978. And I really want to take the time tonight to commend the staff, Christine and the other staff, all the participants who were involved in forming the SCAP, the council, for bringing it forward, all the working groups and the back and forth that went on to finalize this document. So I think tonight really is a time for congratulations. However, it's not over. And the thing I'd like to talk to about to tonight was, it was the last slide, I think, in Christine's slide deck from last week, and it has to do with zero waste. Most of you know that we're drowning in plastics. We produce more than 8 billion metric tons of plastic a year. And any attempt to recycle that plastic really is an abysmal hoax, if at best, really. Very little of the plastics that goes into the recycled bin actually is used. Most of it ends up in the ocean. A great deal of it ends up in the ocean, in landfill and other places. But that's not all. I really liked that Mayor Burt brought up the role of oxides of nitrogen in the burning of natural gas. And that's the primary reason the state banned sale of gas heaters, water heaters, and stoves by coinciding in the life, I think it's 2035 or 2030. It coincides nicely with the Palo Alto work. But it's time to address the health issues of plastic also. I don't know if any of you know, but each of us consumes approximately a credit card's worth of plastic every month. Plastic has been found in the human placenta. It's been found virtually in everybody, microplastics. We're all full of them. And the health effects of microplastics are not proven, but they certainly provide a matrix for all kinds of other chemicals, pollutants to absorb onto, and they're in our bodies. People can do things about it. I mean, plastic cities have moved to ban single-use plastic bottles. At San Francisco Airport, you can't take plastic bottles in there. They don't sell them. They have fountains to refill your water bottle. So I, again, I don't mean to put a damper on what you guys have done tonight. I think it's marvelous. But for me, zero waste becomes the next issue to rise to the top, and you have great people here. I mean, Karen works in that department. And so that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cedric Pito de Laborjutier to be followed by Susan Stansbury. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for hearing this item tonight and considering our input. I support the staff recommendation and all four of its points. Also, the SCAP includes goals and actions beyond just carbon reduction. In particular, I want to draw attention to natural environment actions, N3, to reduce the use of pesticides in all parks. And then four, to include native and pollinator-friendly plants and parks. I would encourage these and all appropriate goals and actions to be applied to homes and businesses and all landscapes, not just the city parks, so we can support biodiversity citywide. Please address hurdles to expanded installation of photovoltaic systems, which will increase green power production and support electrification of homes. Please move quickly towards incentivizing heat pump HVAC, both air source and ground source heat pumps, not just for businesses but for homes as well. A few years ago, we installed a ground source heat pump, which is the most energy-efficient way to actively heat and cool our home. Our home is more comfortable as a result of this switch. Our gas furnace used to dry out our hot air, disturbing our sleep in the winter with dry mouths and bloody noses. This is no longer a problem with our heat pump. Our air is comfortable year-round. We also have the ability to cool our home in the heat waves, and we've set schedules to avoid overuse at times of peak power usage. As part of this project, we installed an effective air filter, which we can run even when not heating or cooling our home, which is great to clean the air from smoke during regional fires. Also, shortly before the system came online, we had introduced three new kittens to our household, which turned out to be pretty bad for our asthma. But when the system came online, it filtered out the pet dander and our breathing improved immediately. So overall, our heat pump HVAC system reduced our natural gas use. All the while, it improved our quality of life. So these systems are great for homeowners as well as for business. And finally, I'm wearing a green shirt here in solidarity with the other supporters of the SCAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Stansbury to be followed by Dasha Leeds. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and council members. My name is Susan Stansbury, and I live in the Barron Park neighborhood. First, I want to thank everyone who devoted time and expertise to updating the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. As the report says, it's both challenging and necessary to reach our 80-30 goals. I urge you to approve the plans now so we can start to implement the key actions outlined in the plan as soon as possible. I urge you to approve the plans now so we can start to implement the key actions outlined in the plan as soon as possible. I hope there will be a big educational path to push people who live and work in Palo Alto about charging their EVs during the day and using the Level 1 option when feasible. I also urge you to approve the heat pump water heater program as a first step. We installed a heat pump water heater and then later a heat pump to heat and cool our house. And in that process, we learned that some heat pumps can also heat water. So additionally, I recommend that you include heat pump furnaces that also heat water in the program. Additionally, please comment on, please commit to an ongoing task force to continue planning and implementing the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan and include the students who are interested in making an impact. It will require a sustained effort to meet our goals and everyone should be welcome to the table. Finally, I urge Palo Alto to commit to a carbon neutrality goal. We are leading and should continue to lead cities in greenhouse gas reductions. Let's set an example and cause a ripple effect in other cities and municipalities. As you know, we are on the brink of several disastrous tipping points. So we need to do everything in our power individually and on every level of government to address the climate crisis. Thanks again for your commitment to our city and our greenhouse gas reduction goals.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dashal Leeds to be followed by what I believe is our final speaker, Diane Bailey. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the conservation organizer for the Sierra Club Limerpieta Chapter. Fossil gas pipelines poison our future. And we fully support Palo Alto's transition away from gas and towards an electrified future without these pipelines consistently leaking under our feet and in our homes. For this reason, we support the full suite of recommendations proposed tonight, including the Advanced Heat Pump Water Heater Program and the Carbon Neutrality by 2030 Goal. We're really glad that council recognizes Palo Alto's leadership role in developing projects and programs that future jurisdictions can adopt with the benefit of our experience. We hope to see equitable electrification retrofit programs expanded and scaled. And on top of this, the health and savings benefits that electrification provides now and in the future for Palo Alto residents. We hope that as you move forward, that you provide the resources and support to the community, workforce and staff for these programs to succeed. Please invest in our future and improve our grid infrastructure and design your policies and programs with equity and biodiversity in mind. I know this wasn't the main topic of discussion tonight, but regarding sea level rise, we hope that the city makes its vulnerability assessment publicly available and that the city begins work on adaptation planning as well. And we're really looking forward to the city's Reach Code update too, and we hope that you adopt the strongest code possible. Strong action now will save us time, resources and improve the public health. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Diane Bailey. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and council members, and thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Diane Bailey. I'm with a community climate action group called Menlo Spark. And I was also a part of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee. I just wanted to voice my support for the recommended actions in front of you, and I'll echo what my colleague Dashal Leeds just commented on. I really appreciate all of the hard work that went into these plans and actions. The Advanced Heat Pump Water Heater Program in particular stands out as an excellent program that really demonstrates leadership on climate action. This is a well-designed program that will help us to transition off polluting methane gas. And I hope you'll move forward with it as quickly as possible. It's crucial to address gas appliances in existing buildings because the gas presents a major health and safety risk to residents. We know that appliances are leaking methane gas even when they're turned off. We know that the gas in our homes includes some toxic chemicals. We know that methane gas is a climate super pollutant, and we're already feeling the impacts of climate change. And we know in our hearts and in our heads that much, much more needs to be done to respond to the climate crisis that we're in. I support all of the proposed SCAP goals and actions, and I hope you'll move forward with them swiftly. Let's do our part towards a climate-safe and sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you. So a question of colleagues before we go into additional questions and discussion. Would this be a good time for a 10-minute break? Or would you like to keep going forward at this time? Up to you. Okay, okay. And before calling on Councilmember Cormac, I just want to ask staff to, in a moment, see if they can give a couple updates on some questions that some of the speakers had. One, I think, and some of these you may have already covered last meeting, but the status of the smart meter program and its rollout, what the review of the renter and multifamily programs that are part of the synergy contract, and when we'll be getting the update on our sea level rise part of our climate adaptation plan. So just a heads up if you're able to give any updates on those, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. And you know, my thanks to so many of you here today. It's great to see you in person. Thanks for your patience and for sharing your thoughts and beliefs and facts with us. A quick question for our staff. If tonight council wanted to create a new board or commission, what would staff recommend in terms of a direction? Is that something we send to policy and services? Do we just ask staff to work on it? It's certainly been some time since we've done this. So before I make a motion, I wanted to hear any thoughts you might have.
That might be a topic that we'd want to engage council to understand your thinking. In terms of the agenda tonight, I don't think it's conducive for you to actually take action, but you could refer the issue for staff to respond to with any parameters that you'd like to have us include.
Great. Is the mayor taking motions?
Well, I think that's one of the things that we're going to want to look at is we have a sequence of staff recommendations. And then we have some additional items beyond that. So I want to see if there are any other questions and then we can go into motions and any discussion. And I don't see other lights, so if colleagues don't have that, we can go ahead and proceed.
So I'd like to make the staff motion, and the clerk can either put up the slide from before or copy it over, and then I have a few additions to it.
So might as just we break it into separate motions, between the stop motion and the add-ons or whatever. I thought that was what I heard the mayor say, but.
We can do it either way. That might be the simpler way is that we take on the staff recommendations first, and then we can have separate motions for additional items. Let's do it that way.
That's fine. Happy to make the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. And I want to emphasize some comments that I heard this evening. First, someone described this package as well put together. It is well put together. And while everyone has thanked those of us who did a lot of talking, really the credit goes to the staff who put it together and listened to us and improved it and refined it over time. So I wanted to point that out. And then when we get to the next part, I think the member of the public who made the plea that we'd be more agile in the future, I think understated the complexity and the time it took to put this together. So that will be part of what I'm thinking about in the next part. We heard a lot of discussion tonight about how important the Advanced Heat Pump Water Heater Program is. But we need to have those conversations that Debbie Maitels and her work tells us we need to have, so that that will involve the workshop. The carbon neutrality goal in terms of that, that's not, that's not a, I'm not viewing that as a big flag we're planting. I'm viewing that as part of the work that needs to get done and is consistent with the plan we've put together. All right. And then the rest of the details in here, I do want to make sure folks understand there's, you know, the way that we're funding the heat pump water program is, you know, it's got three components. And so that's why you see the creation of the electric reserve transfers, you see additions to our budgets so that we can be sure we can implement these programs. We didn't have any questions on that last time. And at the end, we have the professional services agreement number five. This is the one we pulled from consent. This is the actual work, right? This is the person that if you want this done, you're going to be able to ask them to come and they're going to come starting in January. Yes, staff? That's what the answer to the question said, the consent question. First one might get installed in January.
We're hoping to start site assessments sooner than that, but because of the Inflation Reduction Acts, we think most people will want their installations in January, but we don't do site assessments earlier.
All right. Well, that will be a very happy new year. It's really been, you know, a privilege to do this work and to see the different members of the community, especially our high school students, who have really stepped forward and partnered in a very constructive way. So with that.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank staff as well, my colleagues and everybody who volunteered and worked on this. We had a really good discussion last week, and I think it was well-covered tonight. I wanted to make it clear that I wasn't against consent item four. We had a little procedural problem in passing that on consent before we pass this motion. So that's why it was pulled tonight. And then again, I think we've got a good plan here, a good framework. I don't want us to slow things down by trying to refine it kind of beyond where it is. You know, I think the staff report mentioned there's several important steps that we need to get underway, get the CEQA process started. Approving this contract tonight will let us hopefully start the heat pump program as quickly as possible. So really happy to support this. I think we need to celebrate. And so thanks. Thanks again to everybody who worked on it.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also want to thank everyone's work on this. I could tell a bunch of work has gone into all these items. And in general, very supportive. I actually believe that global warming is one of the probably the biggest existential threat to humanity, so it's important that we take urgent action. So I think this is definitely headed in the right direction. I don't have to click. Let me share my screen. Can you stop sharing so I can share my screen? He's on here. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Yeah, can you stop sharing your screen so I can share my screen? So in general, let me just share right now. I think you guys could see my screen now, right? Okay, so first, let me thank staff for getting me this chart. It was actually on the second to last page. I missed it. So thank you for sharing this with me. And what this chart here shows is the amount of cost per metric ton of carbon reduced. And what you'll notice is, and I know I realize that it might be a little bit hard for some of those, some of you guys to see, but basically the first five or so ones are, or maybe sixes are actually negative, right? In terms of you actually make money by doing this. And then the ones on the right, you see that they actually cost money. So like the worst one is multifamily residential space heating in unit gas furnace. So that's relatively expensive, as you could see, between, you know, $1,000 to $1,700, I guess. But the ones on the left, which are, have a higher return on investment, is actually, we actually make money doing it, which is interesting. And I think this is reflective to what staff continuously tells us, which is that the majority of our carbon output is actually transportation, is actually people driving in cars. So this makes, this chart makes a lot of sense, and I think it's really well put together. And so when I think about this program, I have to think about the fact that we have, we have only so much resources. We have only so much budget that we could deal with. And how do we, how do we deal with this very urgent problem that we face, right? How do we deal with global warming? Because we don't, you know, we're spending about $100,000 this year. And, you know, while that might seem like a lot, it's actually quite limited in terms of all the other things that we have to do. So if we think about this $7.5, $7.7 million, how do we maximize the carbon reduction as a city? And last night, David Cole from Carbon Free Palo Alto was kind enough to spend a lot of time with me to kind of go over a scenario analysis. And so just want to give a shout out to David Cole of Carbon Free Palo Alto for all your work and help in putting this together. So we, last night, we sat on my office hours, and if anyone that wants to see how we did the calculation is welcome to go to my Facebook page, and we have it all recorded. And we also have the spreadsheet link, so you could check the calculation and see, you know, where we may have made mistakes or what could be better. But this was just a kind of rough calculation of the program as presented. So that's the one on the left-hand side, the program as presented by staff, and how much carbon is reduced for the cost. And we did a rough swag of, well, what if we were to give incentives for e-bikes? And we, you know, I think after our call, David reduced the acceptance rate to something lower. And I think that's okay. This is just a rough swag. Just we're trying to get an order of magnitude comparison of, let's say, an e-bike incentive versus a heat pump incentive. And there's a lot of calculations here. It's, if I go over every line, I think I'll lose people. So you guys are welcome to go to my page and check out the spreadsheet yourself. It's viewable by everyone in the public. But the net of this is that it's about seven, you get about 7.3 times more carbon for your dollar with an e-bike incentive versus a heat pump incentive. And this has to do with just the fact that natural gas is a much smaller percentage of our carbon output than transportation. Transportation is the lion's share of it. And so, and then like another chart that staff put together shows that transportation, you actually make money doing a lot of these transportation initiatives. And then, you know, David was kind enough to, after our call, to also factor in, because the one thing that staff didn't do with the heat pump water heaters was factor in, well, there's a lot of leakage from natural gas, right? And natural gas methane actually is a pretty big greenhouse gas, although it gets, it gets reduced more quickly than carbon dioxide in the atmosphere naturally. But if you factor in all the leakage, and so he did kind of rough swag, it's still better, right? E-bikes are still better, still about almost three times better, more carbon reduction per dollar. So, and so it's not that I don't support heat pump water heaters. In fact, I tried personally myself to do this in my own house. And I, in general, liked the idea, but I just think we need a lens of thinking about how do we maximize the amount of carbon reduction per dollar in our city? And I realize there's a lot of other metrics we could use, but if we want to treat this as the existential threat that it is, we have to think about how do we, how do we make our dollar go as far as possible? And so I know staff has, on this chart here, or the previous chart I showed you, has done some of this, but I think it would be really good to look at programs like this just so that we could get a feel about, about, you know, how do we, how do we spend the scarce resources that our constituents have entrusted with us to do the best possible for the environment? So the second thing is, and I know that we've talked about, or someone has talked about how low the PG&E rates are versus the Palo Alto rates. And I think that's a fallacy because Palo Alto owns our own utilities. We invested billions of dollars in our own utilities. And so it's like, the analogy would be, a comparison would be like someone renting their house versus buying a house. Someone that bought their house and has the house fully paid off isn't going to have any mortgage payment that's paid off versus someone that's renting, that's going to be making monthly payments. And you say, well, gee, the renter is paying a lot more than the homeowner. And that's of course true because of the fact that, that the renter didn't make the capital investment into the house like the owner has. So we should expect much lower rates for our utilities versus someone that's just renting from PG&E. And that's why, you know, when we look at Santa Clara, which has its own utilities, you know, they have really competitive rates because they also own it. So I just think we have to be careful when we do this kind of comparison. I realize I'm going overtime here, but just want to give some of my thoughts. Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions on the motion or request. One is under three is the staff report had a 2035 carbon neutrality goal. And I would like to propose an amendment that we adopt for the reasons I stated earlier, a 2030 carbon neutrality goal. Is that acceptable?
Could I ask that Councilmember Tanaka stop sharing his screen so the clerk can put the motion back up? And while the clerk is doing that, could staff please discuss, you know, the difference between 2030 versus 2035? What what will we have to do by 2030 that is not in our in our plan now?
Well, council member, I think the the simple answer is that if we achieve the reductions we're planning for by 2030 and we continue to buy the offsets for natural gas that we're currently purchasing, strictly speaking, we'll have, we'll already be meeting that that climate neutrality definition.
And that was, that was my understanding. So why? Why does staff have 2035 in there? What are what are we missing?
That was originally the the goal set by the ad hoc.
Okay.
And at that time, and we we still intend to look at other actions that we might do in the areas of sequestration and other areas that go beyond just purchasing offsets. But I think the initial thought was those were the things that would that would be needed to achieve a carbon neutrality goal. But there's certainly a scenario where we can continue to meet eighty by thirty purchase offsets and achieve that earlier.
Okay, meeting the definition. All right, then. Councilmember DuBois.
I'll accept it. Have you accepted?
I'm I'm going to. I'm checking just to make sure you're comfortable. Okay, so let's go ahead and modify three after carbon neutrality goal in 2030.
And then another question we have, item four, should we fold approval of that in this motion or separate it? It's a staff recommendation as well.
It is included in this motion currently.
Oh, it is, excuse me. Great. Okay, thanks. All right. And I'll just want to comment on Councilmember Tanaka's discussion around the value of things like e-bikes. And I I think that 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 e-bikes are very cost effective, the whole micro mobility sector where it's not only e-bikes, but it's these scooters, it's three wheeled electric cargo bikes, a whole range of technologies that are really efficient. And as Christine Long explained to the S cap when we were asking about, you know, why do we even need to think about other mobility when if we're buying EVs? And the explanation is that there's massive embedded carbon in manufacturing of EVs, even though it's in the net far better than internal combustion engines. Even though Palo Alto is carbon neutral electricity, we're still mixed in with the state grid. And it's not 24/7 carbon free for ourselves on a balance. And the state grid isn't yet carbon neutral or what it eventually will be 24/7 carbon free. We're getting there, but in the meantime, and that's an extensive meantime, programs to reduce our gasoline or even our emissions from EVs or indirect emissions are important. And so it's not a yes, but it's a yes and and that's one of the things, the areas that as we move forward on our next stages of our entire S cap implementation, accelerating that those programs, particularly subsidies to be considered for lower income residents, I think are a very valuable tool, but not instead of what we're doing. So councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, just to follow up on Councilmember Tanaka's analysis. I was looking at key action EV one, which is to raise awareness of micro mobility. And I was wondering, Councilmember Tanaka didn't make a motion, but might want to consider modifying that action to from just raising awareness to maybe evaluating potential incentives.
I was going to do that, but I was running out of time. So but if you want to make the motion, I'll certainly second it.
Sorry, it's packet page 112. From last week.
Councilmember. So I wanted to draw attention to EV four, which is facilitate the adoption of EVs, e-bikes and other light EVs. That might mean, I mean, clarification of that might might be helpful, but that our intention had been that, you know, if where incentives make sense, that that's that's the key action that would would direct us to to work on those.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so reading that broadly to really look at like how we can incentivize people. Thanks.
Okay, I see no more. Oh, Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So I saw staff's response to my question and I appreciate that. I because like, was it three years ago or maybe four years ago now? We we, as a council, approved a pilot program to do a scooter share program in our city. And other cities happen. I seen in San Francisco, I see it in, you know, nearby cities to us. And I think staff's response was that there wasn't enough staff resources to actually implement the program. And with this motion here on the table, is there sufficient staffing to enable that? And if I recall, I think it was it was a unanimous vote on council. I think we all we all approved it. So what's what's going to happen with that scooter show program? Because it's been, you know, three, I think at least three years since we we approved it. So can staff just talk about how that's going to, is that going to finally get in the gear with this? Or what's 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 the plan?
I'm not sure if we have anyone from the Office of Transportation on. I don't I don't believe so, but I can speak to what I understand, having worked through the key actions with them. It it sounds like the economics and and certain aspects of the way scooter share and micro mobility is done. It's changed over the course of the pandemic. And the so there's some more work that needs to be done on that. And the the staffing is a little bit limited right now. And so they're only moving forward as staff time permits on that scooter share, micro mobility pilot.
I mean, would something in this motion help to enable that program? Because we, as council, we already approved it, but it just seems like, I guess, you guys are resource constrained to actually make it happen. Is that right?
Well, again, not knowing all the details, what I've heard is that in the past, we expected it not to have a cost for the city. Under the pre pandemic models, we were looking at where we had these providers, frankly, kind of beating down our door at times to be able to come into the city. And we were saying, well, how can we provide some constraints that give us confidence this is going to be successful in Palo Alto? And now what we're hearing is that that model has changed. There may be financial investments. There may be things that take significantly more staff time to to actually oversee and implement the program. And so the most recent discussions, as we look at these key goals and actions and developing the three year work plan we talked about, we've discussed, as Jonathan alluded to with Office of Transportation, what could we have as that first step in the in the three year work plan to figure out what it actually takes now, under the new circumstances, to be able to have a program?
Can I add just to what director provided is that the economics of that industry have changed. Prior to the pandemic, they were basically lost leader provisions by many e-bike and e-scooter companies who were getting massive investments and being able to subsidize each ride. And those companies have had to move toward attempting to have profitability. And that's a lot of what has driven the model that they're not giving it away for for free or subsidizing it as much as they did, even while advancements are occurring and that there's still growth in that industry. So and and then the other thing that I would add is that from our own staff standpoint, this is one of the things that we've discussed when we, as a council, supported measure L, which is continuation, the gas transfer fee that we have. That measure was toward additional restoration of various staffing positions. And this is the sort of thing that we will be more able to do if measure L passes in November. And I hope that Councilmember Tanaka will support that measure.
So so if a e-scooter or something like that wanted to not ask money from the city, but be able to set up a scooter share or bike share in our city without cost to the city, are they permitted to do so then?
I don't have the answer to that tonight. I know that staff was working on on defining the parameters of the permit that those companies would would need to have and the level of service they would provide. Okay, so I don't think it's enough just to say that any company that said they're willing to bring it here.
So then it's not just, it's not just the economics. It's also that we don't have the process set up yet to enable it. And it's not just that the those companies are demanding money from us.
I probably said as much as I should say about it tonight without being closer.
But I guess this brings up a good, a better, a bigger point of what I'm trying to get at here, which is, you know, we've had this program that, you know, we as a council have have all voted for anonymously years ago, still hasn't happened. And I hear reports from scooter share, e-bike companies of, you know, they're now viewed in other cities, but not here, San Francisco. And it's because they're not allowed to operate here yet. And it's not because they're demanding money. That's what I've I've been hearing. Maybe there's some companies that are demanding money, the ones I've I've heard from have not. And so and then we have a program here, which is going to cost, you know, several millions of dollars, which, you know, it's coming, you know, several years later. And so I I just, that's why, that's one of the reasons why I did this analysis, because I, in terms of, you know, we want to, we want to get the biggest thing for the buck as soon as possible. And it's not like there aren't scooter shares out there. In fact, I use them quite regularly. So and so I I guess, you know, with that in mind, I need to ask that the motion be split here. So on two, B and D, if that could be put on separately, two, two, B and D for everything else, I really appreciate it.
Those seem integral to the balance of the motion.
Okay, then then remove two. That was a separate motion before, so I I think it could be separated.
So you want to remove item two?
Well, I actually, I really, it's really two, B and D, but if you don't want to do that, then move all two.
Okay. That does seem separable. So before doing that, Councilmember Cormac, did you have something you wanted?
I think maybe we should just ask staff to think about it for a moment, because I'm not convinced that we can separate two from one and three. Two and five also, two and five are actually connected. Perhaps staff could help us.
I see that if there's any issue other than two with separating the motion, it would be item five since, although not necessarily, but a primary portion and budget for.
Two and five.
That's a good point.
So let's go ahead and separate two and five from the balance of the motion. And we can vote on two and five first. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes, I just wanted to add in response to the analysis that one of our colleagues provided is that it doesn't capture the the crucial role of methane, right? Which is really part of the reason we're focused on that. So.
Sorry, you did, actually. The second part did.
Okay, it doesn't capture the role of methane, which is part of the reason we're doing this. And then certainly, staff has heard Councilmember Tanaka's concerns, and Mr. Kami will be available when you bring the work plan back, and we'll address that. Great. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Oh, Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. You know, I was wondering if we can put the motion back on the screen. I'm not seeing it, so I'm not.
Oh, it's on our screen, so let's see how we can get it so you can see that.
Thank you.
And so, yeah. Go ahead. Did you have any other questions or just that request?
That was just a request. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So let's go ahead and separate two and five and vote on those first. Okay, and I don't see any further lights, so we can go ahead and vote on those items.
Councilmember Philsef?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
The motion carries six, one.
Great. Okay, now let's return to the balance of the motion. And I guess we we would vote on the other items separately. We don't have to include two and five or, okay. So let's see. One. So it it should be what was items one, three, four. Is that as far as we got? Yeah. Are they now renumbered for this purpose? Is that, and they're all complete in there?
This should be the what's left of the original motion.
Okay, let's vote on the balance of the motion.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsef?
Yes.
The motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can look at other motions. And Councilmember DuBois, you had asked that we proceed this way. Did you have additional?
No, I didn't. I just thought it'd be easier.
That's fine. Councilmember Cormac.
Well, I'll get us started. You know, as I think about the 18 months we've spent as an ad hoc and the layers of people we've worked with and the staff time. And I think about the eight years remaining in our goal. To me, an ad hoc doesn't seem like the right method to use going forward. And I I anticipate us having a pretty robust discussion. So I will, you know, refrain from making a motion until I hear from others. But I think a Climate Action Commission, creating one, makes sense because of the duration and the focus that's going to be required to take this heat pump water heater and roll it out to the everything else that needs to happen. And I think it'd be an excellent way to incorporate high school students. I'm sure we could figure out a way to perhaps have two and have them alternate, you know, junior, senior. So they've got a two year term and there's always somebody coming on and continuing. And I think the UAC would probably, Utilities Advisory Commission would probably want to have a little input as to the division of duties. And I think that's a that's a worthy discussion. But, you know, with with whatever changes occur on council, I think we have to be mindful of who's has the expertise in this area and the dedication. And we know there are many members of the community who want to be more involved. So that's where I'm leaning. I'm looking forward to hearing from others. You know, we already have four, four standing committees. Is that right? Finance, Policy and Services, Rail and Council Pointed Officers. Am I missing any? Anyway, we already, we already have a number of standing committees that require council members' attention. So those are my thoughts, and I look forward to hearing from others.
Well, I don't see other lights. I'll go, oh, Councilmember DuBois, you go ahead.
Yeah, I think just maybe suggest a framework is, you know, I think you know, we should maybe make a list of items who want to refer to staff. This might be one of them. you know, we should maybe make a list of items we want to refer to staff. This might be one of them to really get it incorporated in the work plan, understand what the trade-offs are. There were all the other items that were presented in the ad hoc learnings. You know, I think that would also be a good approach. You know, yeah, I see the two options for the Climate Action Group to either be a standing council committee or a new commission. I would lean towards a new commission as well. And I don't know if most people know that council members are already on an average of eight to 10 other boards as part of the council role. And so I think I'd be supportive of having a sustainability commission that would work with staff and then, you know, bring, bring those recommendations back to council.
I'll go ahead and wade in with my thoughts on this. You know, between 2016, when we adopted the 80-30 goal, and and this year, we had had a number of pilot programs that were validating certain steps, but we really were not on a pace to achieve our 80-30 goal. We didn't have a strategic plan that was really aligned with meeting that goal. We knew what we would have to do in terms of reductions in different categories. But we didn't have the, the community focus, the staff focus, the council focus that was really necessary to do this. And the ad hoc committee, although it was created 18 months ago, I think it got kicked off closer to 15 or so months ago. And, and it, it took the first six, nine months really before we established these teams, which then zeroed in on the specific actionable areas. But the, the heat pump water heater program is really a significant step, not only because it will begin to scale this one part, but it will hopefully be a model that will used for other end-of-life programs in the home and perhaps even commercially. But in terms of its actual impact on our climate reduction goals, it's, I think, about 5% of our GHGs is in this program. So that's significant, but far below what we really need to accomplish. And I'm very confident in saying, in my own opinion, that without this ad hoc, we wouldn't be where we are right tonight. And I do think that we are on a path to eventually being able to keep similar momentum, whether it be through a a standalone commission or a green ribbon task force, or possibly a permanent council standing committee, but I would hope we'd be able to move beyond that. But my strong advocacy would be that we continue an ad hoc for the time being to keep the momentum here. We have a lot of things yet to work out beyond this, this heat pump water heater program, if we're actually going to get to 80-30. We now have momentum. I don't think we want to take our foot off the pedal or back off. And, and the, the, essentially, the ability of the council to drive action and policy is very different from that of a commission. We had a utilities commission involvement in this area, and the utilities commission really didn't have the authority and wasn't empowered. And by, by nature of commissions, they have limited authority. They can make recommendations to the council. But all of these strategic areas and goals and, and actions that still need a lot of flushing out all remain. And if we're going to have a good chance of hitting 80-30, we have to keep this focus. As far as the future council, where we'll have three new council members, I've been really gratified to see that in the council campaigns, this is front and center for essentially every candidate. And that was not the case in 2020. Basically, when I put this as a top priority during that campaign, I was initially an outlier for doing so. Today, this is a much greater community concern, and it's a commitment by whoever comes in on those new council members. We have people with commitment and expertise that I think will allow us to really continue our momentum in this area. And, and so I would be open to, in the future, looking at what should be our, our permanent structure for driving these changes. But I would strongly recommend that we, we continue either with an ad hoc or a redesigned ad hoc. I don't know if the city attorney wants to wade in on whether we'd have to redefine the focus if we were to create a new ad hoc.
Yes, thank you for that question. So the sustainability ad hoc, I think, has been around for a couple of years now, and the ad hoc procedure.
No, no, we, we made the decision in spring of 2021, and then it had its first meeting, I think, early summer. Something like around that timeframe, maybe off by a month or two.
Yeah. So the reason the mayor is raising this issue is because the, the Brown Act provides for ad hoc, which means you don't have to use the formal noticing and agenda procedures for less than a quorum of legislative body that's meeting for a defined purpose for a temporary period of time. You can reformulate this group as an ad hoc for next year. I think that still works. It would be, I think, wise to make a little bit more focused definition around the group. And then you do have that ability to, to meet without those formal noticing provisions. But remember that you can't have any non-council member, members of that group. So if you, if you're wanting to have a different format where you're involving members of commissions or other members of the public or youth, then, then that does become a Brown Act body, if they're formally a part of the group.
And the way that we've structured that over the last year is we have had other members, but they were advisory on teams and that met the requirements that you just stated, correct?
It, it does, as long as they're not a member of the body. So you can, you can meet with other groups of people or individuals that, that are helpful to you as you're doing your work. Yes.
And if it was a, a full commission or a standalone commission, that would be subject to Brown Act rules and require kind of that formality and public noticing every time that they would have a meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think going forward, definitely want some, want to be very intentional about our long-term plan. I, I agree in the, in the short term, maintaining the ad hoc and not losing the great momentum that we, that we now have. Would, would be foolish to let that go. But I, I do like Councilmember Cormac's idea for the, for the long term, mixed with kind of Councilmember DuBois's, I guess, the, the process that he laid out, having, having staff come back and really redefining this and really trying to figure out if that's the best next step or, or making a permanent committee. Because I think it's clear, long-term ad hoc is not the, won't be the long-term solution for this. This is a, a permanent problem that we are going to be facing for all of our lives and future generations to come, unfortunately. And so finding some permanent apparatus to be able to do this work seems to be the, make the most sense. And I really like the idea of finding a way to incorporate youth voice into this commission. I think that's going to be a particular challenge for staff on various liability issues and others. But I think it's something that we can do. Clearly, the youth spoke tonight very articulately about, about this issue, and Sasha and Antonia and Theo and Maya and others before, really showing that this is a problem that impacts all of us and impacts them and my unborn children, as well as future generations in a way that is really perplexing and challenging. And we're doing a disservice for everybody if we don't incorporate those voices. So I appreciate Councilmember Cormac's suggestion. Hope we can further explore that moving forward.
Well, if we're still talking about kind of different actions that we, we may, or guidance we may provide tonight, because we don't have to make decisions on necessarily all these things, let me put out a couple of other things that I'm going to want to see if the council is receptive to. One is to take within the, our, we already adopted the goals and key actions. Within that is a reference to doing the commercial HVAC program and Director Abencine, I, I don't remember, is that E2? Is I, maybe I'm even remember off the top of my head. I don't have it in front of me. But there, if you could refresh us on what we have in that, Goals and Key Actions on that program, because that's an area that I'd like to identify as one that we want to begin a focused effort to try and figure out the structure of a program like we have the last year on the heat pump water heater program. So it's taken, you know, basically a year. And this was, this program was really proposed in concept by Carbon Free Palo Alto several years ago under their Be Smart program. And I just want to acknowledge again that we're basically adopting something very akin to what they came up with and proposed. And so getting going now on beginning the planning for that next major building effort would be one of the, the key things that I'd, I'd want to, whether it's the ad hoc or anybody else, to continue on. Councilmember Stone also referenced the role of youth in this whole initiative. And we, we've really benefited from some tremendous community partners so far and more so going forward. So we have 350.org that has a, I think, a county grant that is going to enable them to have their big army of volunteers to do retail efforts on our behalf at minimal cost to the city, but literally going door to door and identifying who are candidates for for this program and one-on-one answering questions. One of the problems that I don't know if we talked last week about is that many, if not most, water heater replacements are not permitted, even though they're supposed to be. Same thing on EV charging. Apparently, the vast majority of home EV chargers are not getting permitted, even though they're supposed to. So we don't have the data on where those folks are. We don't know when those, those households who are nearing that 10-year end-of-life approximation on a heat, water heaters, when, who those folks are, who we should be focusing on first. And so having real community partners do that, the, what Carbon Free Palo Alto has done, not only on this, but going back to driving us to adopt the carbon neutral electricity program was also put forward by Carbon Free Palo Alto. Those are really major contributions that they have made. But then lastly, a third group, and they're not limited to these three, but these are the ones that I'm most interested in, us really looking at having a a recognized collaboration with as community partners. We've used this in YCS and, and other programs where we have identified community partners. Well, these groups have emerged in this arena. They're incredibly important for what we aim to do. They leverage our resources and provide ideas. But we haven't ever designated them as community partners, because the third one, we talk all the time rightfully about, we care about the climate change that's happening for our lives, but our real commitment is for the future generations. And we have now, in this community, a Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. And they are, have brought together various groups. And one of the problems is that youth groups in this arena, they graduate and then they go on and do great things in college and beyond. But creating that sustainability of validating the youth, the role of the youth voice and the youth participation is incredibly important. And I would recommend that they be the third group that we identify as a community partner and have them be advisory to the Office of Sustainability. And, and work with them on, on an ongoing basis and that we acknowledge them not as a speakers who get three minutes every few months to speak at a council meeting, but they have actual seats at the table on an ongoing basis. So I would, those are a couple of things that I would like us to look at endorsing tonight. Councilmember Cormac?
I'd like to make a motion that we refer to staff, the creation of a climate action commission that will include student members.
Second.
Thank you.
So that, that would be a separate commission instead of the ad hoc committee continuing?
Correct. And let me just check with the city attorney. Is the council able to direct the mayor to dissolve an ad hoc? Or how does that happen? I know the mayor creates it, but how are they dissolved?
Traditionally, we have treated them as one-year bodies, and then typically the new mayor will either endorse the continuation, but more typically create new bodies if there are new ad hoc committees needed the following year.
So. So the current ad hoc will expire at the end of this year?
I, I think that's how we, we've always treated it. Yeah.
Agreed.
Great. Just speaking briefly to this, this is an eight-year project, and we need people to dig in deep. And I know this is extra work for staff to create a new commission. Councilmember DuBois and I spent a lot of time going through our boards and commissions. We did dissolve a commission whose work was done, the Library Advisory Commission. And I can't think of a more important topic. You know, just listen to what Councilmember Stone just said, to engage our community and our staff on deeply, monthly, you know, in the execution of this.
Councilmember Stone?
It's just a, sorry, clarifying now.
Sorry, can I interrupt for just a minute? I'm sorry, if the, if the clerk could just say, to refer to staff, the creation of a climate action commission. Thank you.
No worries. And maybe just clarification in the, in the motion, because I wouldn't want to see the ad hoc be disbanded or to preclude the ability for the ad hoc to continue before that commission is established. I mean, I would imagine, I don't, I've not been around since a new commission has been created. I think it's been a while. I'm curious how long staff anticipates a process like that. Because I'd like to keep the, the ability to have the ad hoc continue while this commission is being created.
Yeah, that's a good point, because you not only need to hear from staff on staff capacity, how staff would recommend defining that, the size of it, the qualifications of members, but then you'll need to have an application process, consider those applications and make appointments. So I don't off the top of my head have a, a timeframe on that. And that's something that the clerk and the, and the manager probably need to think about.
Right. And as it relates even to that first step to define the scope and how that would relate to the work plan, that's under discussion. I know staff is planning to come back in December with the work plan discussion. And so understanding we'll have the council discussion at that point in time, we'll see how much of this can be addressed within that timeframe. That's right around the corner, such as it is, understand the interest.
And I'll just add, if we were to move in the direction of a climate action commission, not only do we have the timeframe in which it would take to design it and, and. design it and and fill it, but then for them to get up to speed and really get their own momentum. And so I would want to make sure that if we were asking staff to we say refer to staff the creation, they wouldn't create it. So maybe we need to clarify.
Would design be a better word?
Yeah, and return to council.
Okay, so we'll do this and then we'll check in with Councilmember Stone to refer to staff, the design of a climate action commission that will include student members and to bring this, you know, referral back along with the work plan at the end of the year.
And then for my support of this proposal, I would want to make sure that we have an understanding that we're not precluding an ad hoc until whatever time at which that commission is up and running.
I certainly wouldn't be predetermining that. And if it would make everyone feel more comfortable, including staff, to put climate action commission, you know, we do, we do these in May, right now, isn't that when we do the someone remind me when we moved all the times to? I think there aren't the March. Okay, so a design of a climate action, yeah, and bring this referral back along with work plan at the end of year. Great. You know, listening to the city attorney, I think it's reasonable to think that this would be a spring, summer, you know, aim for spring in terms of this. And I can't imagine that that would preclude the new mayor from creating an ad hoc if she or he would wish to do so.
I don't see anything in this text that suggests that the new mayor would not be able to do that. That was a lot of negatives.
You want to make sure that there's an understanding that there could be the one before we have the other up and running. The last question for all of us really is when staff comes back, should this come back to, it says at the end of the year, should it come back to the existing council? Or is this really a decision that we think should be in the hands of the incoming council?
I guess I was listening to what council was saying about the work plan, which has all of these components, right? It's the three year work plan. That's going to be the details of what we've just approved tonight. And I think that would be, you know, give staff a time to think about it. And then this council could decide if we think it's appropriate, given our knowledge of the S cap to make that decision, or we could decide to continue it. But I think this council should have the option to look at the the suggestion. And certainly, you know, there'll be enough work in the next year that the new council would probably have an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, as long as we're we're not implying that this council will necessarily make the decision on whether to go this course, but that we'll have staff off fleshed out what that might look like.
I don't think it does. It says that they'll bring a referral, doesn't say that.
Just so that we have an understanding. All right.
Councilmember Stone, I think, might want to speak. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that was the that was the direction I was trying to go to ensure that we did not preclude the continuation of the ad hoc while this process is being played out. And I already spoke earlier to the importance of this.
Okay. Then we can vote on this motion.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yep.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsev?
Yes.
The motion carries seven zero.
So I want to then return. We've through this in the if and when we create a climate action commission, we have a validated role of the youth group. I'd still like for the city to, and we can refer this as part of what staff comes back with by the end of the year, which is identifying what community partner organizations we should recognize as community partners so that our relationship with them is deliberate going forward. Now, that's an informal relationship, just like we have with a number of other community partners, whether it be friends groups that we have for supporting our art center and and our children's museum and zoo, whether it's other community partner nonprofits that we have. So we have this informal but recognized relationships with these community partners. We've never gone through and kind of broken down the structure. But that's something that we could with staff returns, look a little more at what that relationship should be, but just to have that be one of the items that we refer to staff that we want to discuss by the end of the year. And so I guess I'll go ahead and include a motion that that in that same, I forget our language by year end, when staff returns on S cap goals that we include consideration of what would be the appropriate role of community partner organizations.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You kind of lost me when you mentioned the junior museum.
So you're not referring to the friends groups as essentially another form of community partner. Didn't mean to equate the two. I'm just saying we have a whole
I thought you were going to talk about electrification of city owned buildings used by nonprofits, but you're just talking about.
No, I was just saying, we have this range of community partners in different forms and different relationships that we've never really formalized. What are what are all those categories and what might be things? I just want us to look at what we want to do when it comes back, not tonight to determine what that should be.
I still don't understand what you're asking for. I mean, if we formed a commission, members of those organizations could apply to be on the commission.
That might be something that we consider when it comes back before you're in. But looking at their roles and our relationship with them is just what I'm proposing would be part of our discussion in, I guess, December.
I guess I would ask staff if they understand what that means.
So if it's as straightforward as starting to collect a resource list, that's one thing that probably is very doable, but I would ask whether we're heading in the direction of some kind of procurement, you know, we have rules for for having a process around when we want to do a project, announcing the project and having an open opportunity for people to come forward. So are we going in that direction?
Not principally, although when we look, for instance, at 350.org and the role that they may play of providing hundreds of grassroots volunteers to go door to door. Do we, I don't know what any financial support they may need. They think they can do a lot off their $10,000 county grant, but I'm not presuming that one way or another. That wasn't I a predetermination of this at all. That's what I'm trying to say is that I think it's an important discussion to refer to come back, but not to determine those outcomes at this time.
If if I might add, Mayor, in the interest of what staff and analysis might support the subsequent discussion, it does feel a bit wide ranging. And so, given that, I'm not sure that staff would be able to add much other than, again, providing a forum for
I guess I'll add that there's some things that could be flushed out somewhat through the S cap in the next couple of months as well. So the S cap could wade in and think about this and have some discussions with members of the community and perhaps come back to the council with recommendations at that time.
And by S cap, I'm assuming you mean the ad hoc committee.
Sorry.
And and so perhaps that's something that the ad hoc committee, again, tees up for a full council discussion.
All right. Well, then maybe I should reframe it as referral to the ad hoc committee to evaluate what roles community partners should have going forward in our S cap plan. So I'll go ahead and put that as a motion is to refer to the S cap ad hoc, a review of what whether community partners should have recognize roles with the city going forward in relation to the S cap plant. And
I'll second that, but I have a kind of a request, I guess.
Okay. So Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I think rather than doing these things one at a time, I'd really like to see like the bulk of the work and everything maybe into one motion. And then we could vote on that. But yeah, I'm just a little uneasy. We will start passing these as one at a time and then we realize
We can put them in one motion and hopefully then everybody will agree to vote them on them in one motion, or they could come back and want to separate them again, but I'm good with that. So we'll put this as item one under a motion.
Yeah, it's important.
Okay.
So after two, maybe at
So
refer. Yeah, maybe after Councilmember DuBois to make that item one refer to S cap underneath.
And then the then the next one, two that I would propose is also refer to S cap ad hoc committee. Preliminary consider well, just say, drop the word preliminary, just say, committee review of a prospective commercial HVAC electrification program. Prospective.
So when you say refer to ad hoc, you mean this year?
Yeah, so here we are, October. I think that the S cap ad hoc, now that we've got the heat pump water heater program that's really in the hands of staff and soon to be staff and the contractor. The the next two months, I think we should be looking at next kind of strategic actions and and key programs that we want to consider a focus on as the very next things that we do on a more prioritized basis.
I'd like to see the rest of the list, so let's keep going.
So the other one would be to, I guess we could, now that we got everything so far, well, these are all maybe not everything will be a refer to S cap. So the next one also would be a refer to the S cap ad hoc, which would be I don't know how I want to word it, but begin to look at an EV strategic plan. Earlier tonight, I kind of laid out some of the components of that that we need to, we've, you know, we've learned quite a bit. But we haven't converted those lessons learned into a a plan. And basically, as we're, excuse me, as we're entering in a period where we're apparently going to have a wide range of EVs at a big range of costs and and accessibility for much more of the public. We may see, like the whole nation sees, an acceleration in EV adoption. And so what do we need to do to be prepared for that? In one, three and five years out. And just to begin the strategic thinking on what we would come back and recommend or staff would recommend to really be as ready and stay ahead of the curve on the needs as those things are evolving. So that would be something that would return to the council with whatever recommendations might come out of that.
Yeah, I let except I want to hear, is there more or?
Okay. The the only other one I I have, I don't know that needs to be in this motion, but it can is we have a opportunity for a significant event to roll out our our climate plan, some sort of a climate summit. The Assistant Secretary of Energy has responded to an outreach from actually our sibling cities, USA, and they Assistant Secretary has volunteered to tentatively come to Palo Alto on November 12th as a keynoter at an event. And that date was in part because we also have Bloomington representatives, including the Bloomington mayor here at that time. And the interest at the federal level was because that effort would be along the lines of kind of the theme of the sibling cities of uniting the heartland and the coast and the red and blue states around climate initiatives and the so the Department of Energy was interested in supporting that theme and that our work can be shared, not just hypothetically, but kind of begin a partnership of a model of of collaboration. What I would envision on tentatively on that event would, and we, this is something that, you know, we had talked about from the beginning of the year, we had discussed in the S cap whether there would be the electrification workshop and this. At one time, we were trying to have the workshop be before the summer break, that break that wasn't feasible so that that the climate summit might be an earlier in this fall. For understandable reasons, that's been pushed out. And so this climate workshop or climate summit can be the vehicle by which the city really prevents presents to the community, surrounding communities and a broader audience, the really valuable programs that we have, but also to be an event where the the rapidly evolving federal programs and funding are there. The state programs and then regional partners. And I would argue too that having the state and federal leadership see the leading edge elements of Palo Alto's programs not only enables us to more effectively share those work plans and roadmaps, but potentially can further those funding sources to identify us as a great pilot for launching different programs that they would want to scale elsewhere. And we've already seen some of that. California Energy Commission has expressed a real interest in our lessons learned and the programs that we're doing at the state level. So there are really unprecedented funds that are emerging. Whether those come to us as a result of this remains to be seen, but certainly the ability to to have our program be more widely recognized and and emulated would be furthered significantly through that. What I should mention, the other part is that Stanford has expressed an interest in supporting such an event. And so that the idea is that this event would be done principally through a bunch of community partners. And that the city would be a co-sponsor, but not be the principal organizer. I should have mentioned that earlier.
So I definitely supportive of the summit. We we did a summit last year. I I don't know if it's a great precedent to make it part of a motion, though.
Oh, I I didn't feel that way either. The city manager recommended that the council endorse it if we were going to do it.
Yeah, again, I think I want to understand, like you said, if it's mostly partners hosting a summit, if city's providing a deal on conference rooms or something, that's fine, but hopefully this isn't a big effort on staff.
No, the intention is that the organization would be principally through the community partners.
So I guess the city manager, I mean, like I said, we we did this last year. We don't usually.
You're talking about the the event with Denmark and their.
Right. Yeah, so I I don't know, just the precedent of having a council motion in order to do something like this.
Well, again, I think it is a question of scope, the actually, to be honest, I was trying to remember what event you're referring to last year. That was a again, a very low key, if effectively not in in terms of staff resources, very limited in terms of production. It was largely put on by the the Denmark Embassy. So if that's the concept, it would be helpful for the the council to confirm. That's what you have in mind. And again, that it would be another organization that's doing the primary production of the event.
Yeah, yeah. So again, like Dana Summit, we did it. Mitchell Park Community Center, it was most of the day. But again, staff just kind of attended, they didn't really do the heavy lifting.
On that basis, I'm fine to have it either in the motion or not, and just an understanding that we would be willing to co-sponsor this. I'm good either way.
Yeah, I think I am too. So if we if we go back to the motion here, I think it's very ambitious to do all these things by the end of the year. I wonder if there's a way to again, I I understand things with climate are urgent, but I think we've got to be reasonable.
And I I should clarify, I'm not assuming that these will be fully flushed out by the end of the year.
So maybe is there a way to word this where the S cap continue its work and maybe approach these topics and then you know, ideally, some of these would roll into next year and there's some other.
Maybe do an update on whatever progress we've made at the end of the year and then as we then figure out what our future structure of this is going forward, we figure out whether we pass the ball or whatever.
Yeah, I just don't want to.
Okay, so let's figure out how to reword it that.
But I think we got to have reasonable expectations about how far we get on these things and not not kill staff in December.
Understood. So we can why don't we say that for since all three of these are S cap, we can put that in the in kind of the header to the motion rather than under each and to begin work on the following.
And do you want to prioritize them or?
I think that should be the work of the S cap itself is to look at how to prioritize it. The first one is really not significant work. The the second and third ones are what will ultimately be substantial programs.
Right. Can we say like an outline of a EV strategic plan?
Sorry.
For three, can we say something like an outline of a strategic plan?
Okay. So that would be up in the header to say to begin work on the following and present to the council by year end, an outline of the following.
Sure.
Okay. Let's see, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. Thanks to Councilmember DuBois for doing some work on this. I do like the idea of prioritizing it. Would it be possible to put the EV part first? Sort of, let's put three, let's swap three and one.
Sorry, what was that?
I like the idea of prioritizing. Could we swap three and one? Given the importance of transportation as a sector. I'm agreeing with the idea that we should prioritize.
Me neither way, I think if the ad hoc will prioritize.
That's fine.
I don't know that we need.
I I also think, I don't know that we should be identifying the appropriate role. Probably a better use of our time is identifying community partner organizations who should continue to be involved in implementing the S cap.
Well, I I think identifying the organizations is important, but what do we do with them is what I'd like to see the S cap come back to the council with recommendations on.
Sure, that was the second part of what I said. But right now, it just says the appropriate role of community partner organizations. And I I I thought I heard you say what is important, some of the people who are doing the work. So I thought identifying them made sense.
Okay, so if it was identify community organization, community partner organizations and their perspective.
And how they can help implement the S cap going forward.
Okay.
And then could staff please just clarify for me the difference between E two on page 109 and number two here?
Those two are are aligned. E E two is is the same as number two.
E two, two is subsumed in E two already.
That's right.
Well, but it's it's something that is basically over our next three years versus these are things that we're talking about attempting to move forward. And I see council member or Vice Mayor Koo, now I see your hand, move forward with kind of our next focused areas.
All right, well, maybe we could just put at the end of number two here, you know, as part of E two, just so everyone understands that this isn't some new work, that it's a.
Okay.
Okay, and then also, I don't fully understand the difference between, you know, the vision for an EV strategic plan versus what essentially is the long list on page 112. Does staff have any any thoughts about what a strategic plan would look like and how that would be different from the list on page 112?
I think a lot of the goal, so the key actions that we have are our high level direction. And I think a lot of the things that would go into an EV strategic plan are are talked about in the key actions. Similarly to the way that we that that we talked about, the heat pump water heater program with the ad hoc, it's it's also included in the in the energy key actions. So there's there's overlap.
Okay, so fair to say we already have a great start. That's how I'm going to interpret that. Right, Director Agelston, did you want to add something?
Well, if I might. It just strikes me that some of the work that's envisioned here as beginning work and coming back to the council with an outline is essentially the same items that we just, the council has just moved forward with goals and key actions. Where we're essentially planning to build a work plan to bring to the council on the same timing for how to move forward. So I guess a little clarification. You know, in a certain sense, this could mean as we had intended. And by the way, this is already a pretty heavy lift for staff to take this guidance on the goals and key actions and really do some good work to bring back that work plan.
I guess if I would these are not at odds with the goals and key actions, and they weren't intended to be at odds. The difference is which things that we're going to attempt to flush out on a higher priority basis and how we would do that. And as we've seen with the whole S cap, we've been able to really engage with other experts and community resources to have ideas and and approaches and how we would take, for instance, on the electric vehicle goals and key actions on page 112, that's a list, but that's not prioritizing those. It doesn't really look into explaining how they fit together in what different time horizons. Because these are all things we'll want to do, but which of them is most important? What rollouts might we envision in what time horizons? Those are all really important things to attempt to flush out.
Okay, that's more helpful. So maybe if if I were writing this, which I'm not, but I I think I understand what you're getting at now. Really, what we want to do is the S cap ad hoc wants to partner with staff during this work on the work plan on E two and EV one through 10. And we'll just use that as the specific direction, I'm thinking that would allow us to continue to work at the level of detail to which we're accustomed. But not be, but but be really well aligned with the staff. That's how, that's how I'm, okay.
Going going ahead in referencing those aspects of the goals and key actions. So under two would be
E two, we could just put in parentheses.
Yeah.
And then EV.
Parenthesis E two. Under item two in the motion, we'll put in the end of parentheses, capital E two. No, capitalized, I'm sorry. I I just, you got it right. And then under three parentheses, it would be it's EV.
One through 10.
One through 10.
Okay, that seems fine. And I see staff nodding, so I will be happy to continue to do this work.
Well, actually, I think it sounds like we may need a clarification there on on the EV strategic plan. So Director of Ascent, could you confirm your understanding?
Well, based on the the latest discussion I've been hearing, I think what we're really saying is we'll continue discussions with the ad hoc that are going to help us form the three-year work plan and prioritize those items, which is really in line with what staff has been planning to do during this time.
Okay, so are you fine with the motion as written with that understanding, or do you want the motion clarified?
So the the current plan is that in December, staff will bring back using this EV sheet as a specific example. The order of follow-up actions as as a work plan. So with this direction, it sounds like the ad hoc committee will review that prior to it coming to the.
Well, actually, the intention was between now and then for the ad hoc to work with staff on the development of that as opposed to a sequential action. Just like we have on the rest of the ad hoc work.
The clarification I would ask for, I I'm interpreting this to mean that we would have that interaction that would have the ad hoc ad hocks input into the three-year plan. But that's a little different from if even before then, we were trying to actually begin to define in detail some elements of a new program, say on.
No, I I think the intention is along the lines of what you first said, which is that the ad hoc would, as its next steps, work with staff in beginning to develop that these particular two areas as a a prioritized focus within this work plan. And we're collaboratively over the next two months with staff on on what that work plan would be.
I think we're fine with that approach.
I I should raise the question and or raise this question publicly as to whether what sounds like the implicit focus on these two areas would affect staff's capacity to come back with the overall work plan within this two-month timeframe.
As I said, having the entire work plan is always going to be a heavy lift. These are important components that we did plan to spend some time.
Yeah, frankly, I was having the whole work plan by year end sounded pretty ambitious to me, the next updates, but so if we're all under the understanding that what we, staff's going to be attempting to bring forward an update to the work plan with whatever level of progress they are able to make by that time. And that we're going to have a particular focus in collaboration with the ad hoc on these two key areas. I think that maybe clarifies it well enough.
We agree.
Okay.
So I see Vice Mayor Koo's hand is up.
Yes, Vice Mayor Koo.
I just wanted to ask on number one. I guess the word implement concerns me a little bit and I think identifying the community partners and their roles is all right, but then to implement the S plant, S cap. I think it's.
Good point.
We, we, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we? Yeah, Councilmember Cormac suggested support.
Right.
Better replacement. Good.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. I'm not seeing any more lights. So looks like, oh, Councilmember Phil said.
How busy is the ad hoc right now?
Well, we haven't, we, it was all pointed toward kind of getting this work to the council. So we've been busy. Especially I'd say over the last six months since we established the teams and it created a lot of momentum. And I think there's a lot of interest in continuing the momentum through the end of the year.
Here's here's my, here's my level of non-clarity, sort of listening to this this whole discussion, it's just. Yeah. First of all, I'm not sure that ad hoc needs a motion to identify community partner organizations and and how they can support the the program, but you know, that's that's okay. The other stuff, you know, listen to the discussion, it sounds like, well, it's stuff that staff's already working on, right? And has working on work plans for and say, well, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna sort of rephrase how we look at those things and assemble and put some, you know, some some high level stuff, you know, on them and so forth. But but we're, there's not any more work because we're already working on these things. And well, I mean, if it's the same stuff we're already working on, then I guess I guess I worry a little bit that, you know, rephrasing the same stuff we're already working on from a different perspective sort of, you know, lends the possibility that, you know, with the best of intentions, right? That members of the ad hoc committee might inadvertently pile a whole bunch more work on staff. Right, through this process, you know, for example, you know, I'll just, I'll just grab two-way charging as an example, maybe. You know, I'll just I'll just grab two way charging as an example in the E V strategic plan, so. I I I'll probably get some disagreement here, but I personally think E V two way two way charging with E Vs is a decade away. But the ad hoc might, you know, say, yeah, we should have staff go look at two A E V charging and, you know, and. And, you know, which is fine, you know, as long as something else on the list drops off. And I guess I worry that there's the the potential on sort of all this. You know, reclassification and so forth that. You know, that 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 process doesn't happen the way it it should be, so I'll probably go against this.
So I'll just add that the way staff and and we have just had this discussion, this is going to be. Feeding in to staff coming back with the work plan. With whatever level of progress they've made on it by year end. And I the other thing that I would add about the S cap and we. We saw this very much so once we realized that we need to create these three teams is that. Certainly in the the case of the the tech technical team and the finance team. There was a real strong contribution by the community partners who were part of the team. And bringing in their insights and expertise really complemented. What we had in internal capabilities certainly exceeded what we as ad hoc committee members. I had as prior knowledge. So that's that that those who weren't able to witness that process. We had a lot of really valuable contributions by. These community experts and advocates that contributed to the progress that we've made.
And without this motion too.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Councilmember Phil's comments, I think the 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 key going forward here. As someone who has both participated and observed the process to this point. Is to allow us to continue to make progress while managing our time. Our collective and individual time. And I can tell you that that will be a struggle and so recognizing that your staff here. Has been, I think extraordinarily flexible in in how to accomplish that. I I can tell you with great certainty that this will continue to be a struggle and 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 this will be the time for the council members. As well managing the time of council members as well as managing this time of staff and obviously any community members that participate going forward.
Okay, Councilman McCormick.
I'm I'm sure it was inadvertent that the mayor didn't mention the communications team and the contributions by. The people on the communications team, which were significant. In fact, I mentioned earlier, so just want to call that attention. You know, I I really appreciate having sat on this, what Councilmember Phil Seth just said, and I do feel like the role of our committee was to. Help spur a important project, which we have just passed. And get the S cap over the over the finish line with with the council at least, if not with SEQA. So I I thought Councilmember Phil Seth was heading towards that requesting that the mayor dissolved ad hoc and. I would have seconded that. I I feel that we have done our work and that the staff is fully prepared to do this. But if the council wishes the S cap to continue, I am fully prepared to continue to do this.
Well, I thought that under the prior motion, we had come to a consensus and an agreement on the basis of that motion. Of what we were going to be doing, and this sounds like an effort to retract what we had already just agreed to. In the previous hour.
I don't think so. I think you said that it wouldn't preclude the ad hoc. But I think if it's the council's wish to to complete our work and again, I. I think it'd be appropriate for us to complete our work and I'm also willing to continue it.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on this motion? Okay, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
No.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
The motion carries five two.
Thank you. Okay, does that conclude this item?
I guess so.
Correct? Nothing else, right? Is that correct, Steph?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all. Some good progress. Very important. So we have the one other item. You want to take a break beforehand? Is that what you're saying? Okay, so let's take a ten minute break. And get started. So our next item is adoption. Of support or oppose positions on state and local measures. That will be presented to Palo Alto voters on this coming November ballot. And this cotton gains.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. The item before you today, as the mayor stated, has to do with the items that'll be presented to Palo Alto voters at the November eighth, twenty twenty two ballot. And we provided a few potential positions for the city council to consider based off your legislative guidelines. That's the lens by which we looked at this. And then from the city clerk's office, we'll give a little bit of background and we'll go into the items.
Thank you, W C D manager. So some background information, we had a similar item in late two thousand twenty where we brought before the council, the twenty twenty ballot initiatives for discussion. At that meeting, council voted to either support, oppose, or take no position for each initiative. And tonight we have before you the twenty twenty ballot initiatives. In total, we have seven state measures and two city measures. For local city initiatives, as you know, we have measure K levying a business tax and measure L reaffirming the city's existing utility transfer tax.
Thank you, and for both of those, staff had it as a support position based off of prior discussions from the city council and your legislative guidelines. And to the state ballot initiatives, I will high level go through each of these and the positions, and we also have Mr. Nicolo De Luca on the line. Who can provide a little bit more color from towns and public affairs. So there is proposition one, which is a constitutional right to reproductive freedom. Based off of prior action from the city council, the potential position to take on this is a support position. Of note, the League of Women Voters also had a support position for proposition one. The second one is proposition twenty six, which allows in person roulette, dice game, sports wagering on tribal lands. There's no recommended position on this item. Of note, the League of Women Voters also has no position on proposition twenty six. The League of California Cities has a neutral recommendation related to. Proposition twenty six. In terms of proposition twenty seven, which allows online and mobile sports wagering for outside of tribal lands. We have no recommended position on this proposition as well. The League of Women Voters has no position as well, and the League of California Cities opposes. Has a opposition position related to proposition twenty seven. And Mr. De Luca can provide some more information about that opposition position. Proposition 28 provides additional funding for arts and music, education, and public schools. We have no recommended position on this item. And of note, the League of Women Voters has a neutral position on this item. Next slide, please. Proposition 29 requires onsite licensed medical professional and onsite licensed medical professional at kidney dialysis clinics and establishes. Other state requirements, we have no position on this item recommended. As there's no legislative guideline in reference to that particular item. And the League of Women Voters had a neutral position on proposition 29. On proposition 30, which provides funding for programs to reduce air pollution and prevent wildfires by increasing tax on personal income over $2 million. The potential position for this is to support it. Of note, the League of Women Voters is neutral on this and Governor Gavin Newsom has been very vocal in opposition to proposition 30. Lastly, is proposition 31, a referendum on the 2020 law that would prohibit the retail sale of certain flavored tobacco products. This is one of those items where it is a little counterintuitive of what a yes and a no vote mean. But in this case, the potential position is to support it. And of note, the League of Women Voters also supports proposition 31. And with that, I'll give it over to Mr. De Luca to add just a little bit of context on a few of the more discussed items in Sacramento.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gaines, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Nicolo De Luca. I'm a vice president Townsend Public Affairs and also with me tonight is my coworker from our Sacramento office, Ms. Carly Shelby. Who also be weighing in on a few of these measures. As you know, as Ms. Gaines said, November 8th is when the voting is going to start, but actually remember we've got early voting, so ballots are coming out very, very soon. It is interesting to see that there's only seven propositions for consideration this year, which is the fewest ballot measures before voters in over a century. Reason being, which also could impact moods, is the impact of COVID-19 on signature gathering during the qualification process. Which necessitated social distancing and significantly impacted the price of gathering signatures. With regards to how voters are feeling right now. A recent statewide survey conducted by the P P I C, Public Policy Institute of California. Reveals that the average Californian voter has viewed this midterm campaign season in the context of. Rising consumer prices, higher interest rates, financial turbulence, and then uncertainty about job growth. So traditionally, when you hear those topics, voter apathy right now is at a level of frustration and not really excited about a lot of these measures. Surveyed voters named the economy and inflation as a top issue, followed by homelessness. Housing costs and availability, and then the environment. So with that said, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Shelby, my coworker, who could say a little bit more about. I think it was proposition 27 and the reason why the League of California Cities is opposed. Thank you.
Yeah. Hello, Mayor, council members, Carly Shelby, Townsend Public Affairs, happy to be here this evening. The League of California Cities and their board positions noticed that, or they noted that it lacks enforcement mechanisms. Creates an unlevel playing field between existing card rooms and does not distribute homelessness funding in the latest cities for proposition 27. And that's why the organization remains opposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of these measures.
Thank you, Mr. De Luca and Ms. Shelby. And that concludes the presentation. We'll hand it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for discussion amongst the council.
All right. Shall we see if there are any members of the public first wish to speak?
Yes, there is. One moment, please.
Great. So our first speaker is Liz Gardner. Welcome.
Thank you for the third time tonight. I do want to speak on this because I really, first of all, the comment or the the data that this is the first time in a century that. We haven't, there's been such a low number of signature gathering. I I also think that there in the 90s and the 2000s, there was an actual exponential amount of signature gathering. And people were actually getting paid like a dollar per signature. And I'm glad that has kind of come down a few rungs because I think it was just outrageous how many propositions were ending up on the ballot. And how people couldn't really keep up with the amount of different propositions that were being presented to Californians. That said, I do want to say that. The three candidates that are running for city council right now are imbibing a lot of the. Philosophies and missions either for or opposed to some of these initiatives. One of them is we are in a housing emergency. I know I keep reiterating this, but. We have to really confront this head on as we deal with climate, as we deal with the economy, as we deal with. The lack of prevailing wages. And so I just hope that the city council, I know a number of you guys have endorsed some of the candidates. For city council and that the three candidates that I really feel like are really digging in deep. On some of these initiatives like business taxes and so forth for housing. Lisa, you know, Julie and Vicky are really moving in a direction that we need to go. We have dealt with a crisis in the pandemic. We're just dealing with a trifecta of things that have to do with equity and inclusion and exclusionary, you know, zoning. And let's do this. It's it's really time. I think we've all suffered under. A draconian presidential for years since 2017 wildfires, climate, you name it, we've gone through it. And we need to change pandemic on and on. So thank you for listening. I just hope. We really move on, move in a positive way, not gloom and doom. Thank you.
Okay, we'll return to the council, council member DeBois.
A quick question for Nicolo. What what is behind the dialysis measure? It seems like every election this topic comes up.
And council member, that's a great question. It's funny because my wife just the other day was saying that when one of the ads up here in Sacramento was running. I think in the last three or four years, there's been a lot of measures on dialysis, frankly, without being too tongue in cheek. There's a lot of money involved. And as the speaker just said, you know, the the cost for signature gathering has gone up. And some of these companies you'll see are not afraid to spend that much money. Let me dig a little bit deeper and get you a better answer, but right now, a lot of what's involved is that, you know, these are businesses that are being attacked, are being impacted. And they're ready to defend it at all costs. Carly, I don't know if you want to add anything on that.
Yeah. So with this measure, and this is the third attempt by a labor union to push this measure on the ballot. Supporters argue that the dialysis business should have increased transparency. And that requiring additional licensed medical professionals to oversee these dialysis functions will improve patient outcomes. There are two dialysis clinic providers throughout the state that own about 85% of the clinics. The opposition says that the additional soccer necessary and that measure could result in additional costs and closure of these clinics. So it really is kind of a labor fight that we're seeing.
Great.
And then council member, just one more fun piece of trivia. Our last check, which I think was towards the middle of last week, 86.3 million has been invested in this measure. So it's 86.3 million on this measure.
Wow. Yeah. Thanks. And a question for staff, I guess, what what would be the impact of council coming out in favor of K and L? Is that going to change our ability to do any advocacy for those measures?
No, this isn't. This is your one chance to take a position and you just take a position of support and you do it in a public.
Mayor can't write a letter because we voted for it or anything like that.
No.
Okay. So I think generally I agree with all the staff's recommendations with the exception of Prop 28. So I think we could support Prop 28 under our health and safety of the community value. There've been a lot of studies that show that. There are clear mental health benefits to the teens of the arts around depression, anxiety and stress. And this prop 28 is running unopposed. There was no argument submitted against it. Which in a state the size of California, I find to be pretty incredible. So I think we should support 28. And then since this is our opportunity, obviously a support K and L as well. We've had a lot of discussion about that here at council. But the business tax. It's a small modest tax that includes all the small businesses in town and will help pay for public safety. For affordable housing and for rail safety as well. I hope most voters will find that to be a non-brainer, no brainer. The other one is the gas transfer. And I thought it was interesting to look at the. Measures in the county Santa Clara actually has two. That mirror are the city of Santa Clara, a business tax and a utility transfer. Their utility transfer is 5% of the gross profit seeds are $30 million. And you know, our our gas transfers are $7 million a year. So I found that to be quite interesting. I mean, there's is worded very simply, but it's a lot more significant. And again, this is a long established practice that we've had since the city was chartered or since 1950s, I guess. And it goes to pay for a lot of general fund services. So support both K and L. Thanks.
Council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt, and thanks to staff for the, you know, nice, nice layout of things here. I wanted to ask about proposition 30 because it's a little perplexing. So I think my my questions are going to be for Mr. De Luca and Ms. Shelby on this. So personal income is a highly variable source of income, right? It fluctuates a great deal in the in the state. So. You know, that that's one thing to think about. I'm surprised League of Women Voters is neutral. I'd definitely like to understand more about why the governor is against it and what this really has to do with lift. And then and then a specific question is, you know, I recall we passed a proposition in the state. That was a percent of income tax for healthcare. And I'm trying to remember what that percent was and at what amount it kicked in. I feel like it was it was lower than 2 million. I think it was like 1 million. So I'd just be interested in understanding, like, I feel like this is the second time where, you know, the state is, you know, where the initiative is being asked for this type of thing. So those that I'd love to learn a little bit more about Prop 30 and why it seems a little perplexing.
Thank you, council member. I'll answer some of your questions and then Carly, feel free to jump in. As it relates to the governor, that was something I was speaking with your team about today. And on his ad, she's been pretty clear. He felt that this is really one company's attempt to benefit as opposed to making this look like it was something needed statewide. The overview of Prop 30 is going to require taxpayers with incomes above 2 million annually to pay an additional 1.75% of their share. Of the income above 2 million. I think you were just alluding to 2 million in California. Frankly, it's not that much. There's a lot of higher earners, not just in the Bay Area, but statewide. The 2 million is not adjusted for married filing joint filers. And a lot of what's being discussed is how these funds will then go into. A new account called the Clean Cars and Clean Air Trust Fund. That's going to be in the state treasury. And then they're going to allocate the funding in many different ways, a lot of it 35% to the CEV infrastructure investment. 45% to ZV and clean mobility, 20% to wildfire greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And then some kind of subsets of that. So that, you know, the goals of funding is invest in the electric infrastructure, address fires, and then have clean mobility. Let me see what more information I can get from the governor's perspective. But from what we've seen and the people we've talked to, it's really frustration that one company would really be behind this, looking like that they would directly benefit from it. And currently, I don't know if you want to add more to that.
Because that was a good overview. I'll just add that the recent California Resources Board regulations. Have this new regulatory transition to 100% new electric vehicle sales by 2035. So many, so this is kind of complementary to that and that it would kind of allow low income households to support the purchase of these vehicles.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. I guess I'm I'm less certain listening to council member DeBois about proposition 28. This looks unfunded. Is that correct? There's no funding source identified for this.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that is true. This would be about a billion dollars in new tax revenues above the statutory. Spending or tax guidelines set forth by proposition 98.
Okay, tax revenue on who? Who would pay it?
Proposition 98 derives taxes from various sources. I believe a lot of it is sales tax, property tax, it's kind of a combination of taxes that's levied on varying sources.
I guess what I'm confused about is it says the minimum under the proposed law would be in addition to the funding required by proposition 98.
Yeah, so that's above the existing Prop 98 level, as you know, and Prop 98 comes out of the state's general fund. It's an allocation of the general fund for education.
So it's a it's an additional earmark. There's no revenue fund for 98 for.
It would, it would, it would cut into the general funds allocation.
Okay, and our staff has the PAUSD taken a position on proposition 28?
We do not have any information from PAUSD of positions taken. We haven't reached out.
Okay, so I'm at this point unprepared to support it without without further information about the impacts. And then just on on K and L, you know, we've we've talked about them a lot. K is a sensible moderate tax that will go to fund things this community needs. And measure L is just keeping on doing what we've been doing in a way that means that when our federal ARPA funds run out. We won't have to, you know, cut $4 million out of our budget. So in general, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation and I appreciate the thought that went into them.
Council member Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So I'm curious, from the staff perspective, how does the council's 2022 list of priorities? Kind of play into this discussion and and our decision of which measures to support?
Thank you, Council Member Stone. In general, we look at each of the propositions when we bring this item forward and just see which of your legislative guidelines are in any way linked to the item. So if it seems too much of a stretch, like this guideline could apply if you look at it like this or something. We don't think that that's enough cover for the city council in terms of us saying that you've already taken an action to support a specific topic. We also take into account other recent resolutions that you've passed or ordinances that are directly linked. So that would be the case for proposition one about reproductive health that the city council recently took in action on that title. That's not directly covered in your legislative guidelines. So we use council action that's existing to guide these items and then obviously the city council can discuss taking anything further.
Okay, thank you. On proposition 27, is there a projected range of revenue that the state expects to receive from the tax revenues?
Curly, you want to take that one since you've been deeply involved?
Yeah, so proposition 27 is estimated to bring in, I believe, between the 400 to 500 million dollars for the. Homelessness assistance and prevention fund, the grant program for local governments. The total costs of it are kind of unknown because they fluctuate depending on what is spent on. You know, kind of enforcement mechanisms. So. I believe that we're looking at a few hundred million dollars in additional revenues for budget resources, especially for homelessness prevention efforts.
Sorry, and that was the one that you said earlier, there was no enforcement mechanism for it? That's why the league was opposed?
Um, so they, the league essentially was saying that. Their lack of proper enforcement mechanisms, mechanisms commiserate with. The substantial increase in virtual sports wagering. So I think that their notion was that. The effects were kind of unknown because it would rapidly expand online sports wagering practices. Which has not been done in the state yet.
All right, and none of that money would be funneled to local governments, correct?
Also, I can jump in on that one, Carly. So councilmember, so that, sorry to hit you up with the acronym soup. The HAP. Program Housing Assistance and Homeless Prevention Program. Is funding that's been around about. For about five years. It first started under Governor Brown and then it's been. Continued under Governor Newsom. It is funding that goes to. The big 13 cities. All 58 counties and then continuums of care. So it goes to local government. I know that. Your county, Santa Clara County, has worked with the city before on some of the HAP dollars. The only bummer is. As Carly was saying, it's not expected, it's expected that there would not be more than 500 million from this measure, but then it's still kind of hard to tell. Keep in mind, the last HAP allocation, this last budget session was $1 billion. So I think there's been some snickering in some corners of. The Capitol about, hey, this is great. This was funding for homelessness and housing. But homelessness is such a large problem to address. That are you just kind of throwing pennies and cents at it? We've also been a little bit desensitized on millions and billions. But some of the feedback that we're hearing is, yeah, that, that's a good start. We need a lot more if you really want to say you're addressing homelessness.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That kind of frank analysis that I agree, it felt, it feels like a drop in the bucket. On Proposition 26, the profits from the 10% tax, so that would be partially distributed to local governments to address said. Gambling addiction and mental health. Do we know if that money has to be spent on mental health problems associated with gambling addiction?
That's a good question and I can look into that further. My understanding is that a lot of the revenue that will be generated from Proposition 26. Would be largely discretionary funding within the general fund. So I think that the state would have a lot more way to spend it as they see fit than Proposition 27 generated revenues.
Okay, thank you. Those are, those are my questions. I do, I think. I think Councilmember DuBois made a, made a good point, an argument for, was it Proposition 28? Yep, providing additional funding for arts and music education. I just kind of briefly, because I agree with the points he was making, found a good USA Today article. Just read one quote from it saying that. Studies have shown that participating in music and art can alleviate pain, help manage stress, promote wellness. Enhance memory, improve communications, aid physical rehabilitation. And give people a way to express their feelings. And this study was in particular on, on. Teenagers having suffered through trauma and other issues. And we made it a point this year to include within our. Community health and wellness, a particular focus on youth mental health, especially coming out of the pandemic and. And I think we all agree the power that the arts can play there. I think this fits within that. And I think that's a worthy position for, for us to take. So. I agree with Councilmember DuBois on including that. Other than that, I agree with the, with the staff recommendations.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, so. I think. You know, I think in general. City ought to try to avoid taking positions on bills that don't sort of have a direct nexus of impact on the city. I mean, this stuff is, this stuff is. Most of this stuff is bigger, way, way bigger than us. And, you know, I mean. We, we could, but is it really a good use of our time going around advocating for stuff that's sort of state and federal level stuff? I kind of think no. And so. My, my druthers on this is, yeah, we should support K and L, of course, because they're Palo Alto. Right? And the rest of this stuff is sort of, you know, up in the ionosphere and, and, you know, we're, you know. To first order, we shouldn't take a position on any of it. That said, okay, I think. You know, a couple of these, you know, you can make an argument that, that we should do it. I don't think we should take a position on online gambling and so forth. That's a state level stuff. 28, I actually kind of agree with Councilmember Cormac. You know, it's really a school, a school thing. And, you know, whether, whether the school, whether the, the state school system. You know, wants to spend a little more on arts and a little less on math. Seems like that should be a decision left to them, right? Now, this particular bill says, well, actually, we're going to allocate, you know, another billion from the general fund to the school system. Right? Well, that seems like a, a thing that sort of is a state level kind of thing, not necessarily something that, you know, individual cities should. Get involved with. It seems like, you know, you know, the school district ought to take a position on that. I'm not sure the city should take a position on that. So I kind of think we shouldn't do that. You know, the, the 29, you know, I think clearly we shouldn't take a position on that, except I'm really tempted, right? Because this is the third year in a row that basically it's a labor deal. And, you know, the rest of this stuff, the only bullet that, that matters in here is the one that, that requires an onsite physician or, or PA. While this is going on. I mean, kidney dialysis is, a tech does it. It's a machine. They run the, they run the machine. It's basically a handout to labor, okay, that they have to have a doctor on site while they do this, right? So. And so, on the one hand, I didn't think, think we shouldn't get involved in that. On the other hand, I'm tired of seeing this every year from these guys, right? So. So the one that I did want to ask about was Prop 30. This, Nicole, are you still there?
Yep, still here.
So, so I have two questions, you know. One is that how does Lyft make money on this since they're footing the bill, right? And two is if any money is raised, do we actually get any? In Palo Alto?
You know, the first question about Lyft making money is a great question. I do not have an answer. I am happy to go research that and work through the manager's office to get you that answer. As it relates to, will Palo Alto see benefits if this is approved? Yes, because this funding is going to go through the state and there'll be competitive grant applications. And other opportunities for the city to either. Apply for some of these funds or to partner with the county or to partner with service providers. To secure some of these funds, primarily the funds on the infrastructure side. Not necessarily the wildfire greenhouse gas emissions reductions. Due to that money is going to be primarily for rural parts of the state.
Right. And then, and then, you know. Subsidizing electric cars is something that the city is not going to benefit directly from. How mu- how much total is this going to raise?
Let me check that. One second.
That would be between 3.5 and $5 billion annually. And so Lyft has a vested interest in transitioning their fleets to zero emission vehicles because the. California Resources Board adopted regulations that companies such as Lyft must use zero emission vehicles. For 90% of their miles drive or travel by 2030. So this would essentially. I mean, work in their favor in the past to kind of fund that transition to more of their drivers utilizing zero emission vehicles.
Okay, got it. So they want high now, or high income individuals in California to subsidize converting their fleet to electric, electric.
That is the argument from the opposition.
But, but the side effect is a third of it might go to EV infrastructure programs that. Folks like us could potentially, you know, tap into.
Yes, absolutely. There will be an kind of. Amount of funds that will be disseminated to local governments at some point, once they kind of. Figure out the funding mechanisms and distribute at least half of the funds to low-income communities that have been affected by pollution.
Okay. Well. I guess I would, I guess I would support us taking a position on, on 30. The flavored tobacco thing, you know, we've already done in Palo Alto, so that one seems reasonable. You know, Prop 1. I guess, I guess, could, could I ask the city attorney again to explain that? I mean, I, I kind of wish they hadn't put it on the ballot, you know, sort of, because. Right to an abortion is already very strongly protected in California, but. But there's an argument that, that if there's a federal ban on abortions, that having it in our constitution might make us more secure from that. Is that? Is that an accurate statement?
I, I'm. I'm really reluctant to speak formally on this issue. It's, it's out of my lane. Good luck as you face your ballot.
Well, I fear if it goes down, so. Anyway, so yeah, I prefer we didn't take a position on 28 or the gambling, or the, or the gambling propositions.
Vice Mayor Coop.
Thank you. I wanted to find out, so on Proposition 30. So it raises it up to 15.05. For individuals who is earning 2 million or more?
So, yes, it doesn't discriminate between married joint filers as well. So it's likely that a lot of the funds would be taxed from joint filers. But yeah, I would leverage an additional tax of 1.75% on the share of income above $2 million annually.
Which brings it to the 15.05. Percent. Yes, right. Currently is 13.3%, right? So an additional of 1.75. It'll take it up to a total of over 15%.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
I actually like the philosophy of maybe we, we don't take position on things that don't concern us. So I think that's not a bad idea. But with that said, I'll give you my take. So K and L, I think you guys know my opinion. K, we're in a bear market in basically every market at this point. We heard layoffs, so hiring freezes from all the major tech companies in the area. We have record high vacancies. You know, CNN just said today that 98% chance of recession, although we already had two quarters of GDP decline. So I, I don't think of this a technical sense here. On L, you know, it's. We just approved $7.7 million, right? So it's kind of hard to go back to the taxpayer to say. We need this utility transfer tax. It would just, we just did that. So I don't know. I think that's still a bit questionable in my mind. At 28. I, I agree, this sounds like more of like a scoreboard thing. So I don't think we should be taking a position on that. And then, let's see, 29. You know, I, I know so many people that struggle at medical care costs and to make it even more accessible for people that are struggling sick. Just doesn't seem to make sense to me. So. If we were to take a position on 29, I think we should, we should oppose. On 30. So. To me, it's, it's, I don't know why we would subsidize Lyft, right? I mean, they should just charge their customers more. If they want to upgrade their cars versus having everyone else pay. So. Because what about people that buy, what about people that don't take their cars? Why should they subsidize Lyft? So I don't think that makes sense to support that. 31. 31. Tobacco, I mean, I would support it, but then again, maybe we don't need to. So anyway, that's my take on this.
So, excuse me. I concur with my colleagues who have spoken in support of K and L and. And I will support it as well. On the other measures. I, I do think that we should limit ourselves to where we really see a nexus with. Either city positions or city priorities and values. And so I do think that. Our. Position on individual rights warrants our support of Prop 1. I don't think we should. Take positions on 26 and 27. That's separate from. My personal opinions on them. But I, I do think that for the reasons that most of all Councilmember Stone articulated and Council. Member DuBois as well, but that Prop 28 is really something that. Would have an effect on youth well-being and youth mental health based on. Studies and, and what we really recognize as the need to have. A balanced approach for our, our youth. And so I think that is consistent with our council priority on that. To support it. And on Prop 30. I, I definitely would not. Support it for the reasons that. The coalition led by the government, the governor has opposed it. And the arguments are that. It's supported by Lyft. So that the. The state would help subsidize their obligation to electrify their fleet by 2035. So that's the basis for. The governor's opposition and a very. Folks who feel strongly on this or they're allied with the governor, I can't quite discern, but. I, I wouldn't. Endorse a support position on that. I think I'd, I'd go with no position. And then on. Prop 31, it's generally consistent with our. Past directions on this and our city ordinance. It actually. Provides a distinction that some members of our community have sought, which is the distinction between tobacco products that are. Oriented toward youth and high-end products that are not. So those are the. The ones that I would support taking a position on. So that would be. Prop 1, so. Think. So how do we want to do this? Do we want to vote on each measure? I guess we probably have to. So why don't we go ahead and start with K and L as a set? So I'll move that we. Support K and L.
Second.
Okay, and. Councilmember Phil Seth, will you want to speak again?
That was exactly the motion that I was going to make, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, I see no lights. I think we, on most of these, we've, we've all spoken, so hopefully we'll be able to act expeditiously. So would the clerk please call a roll on? K and L?
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
The motion carries 6-1.
Okay, then I will move support for Proposition 1.
Second.
Second.
And. The clerk is ready. Feel free to call the roll.
I'm sorry, who seconded this motion?
Councilmember Cormac, Ken.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yep.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
The motion carries 7-0.
Okay, and I'm going to skip over the ones that I'm not. Moving to take an action if others subsequently want to make a motion, they're welcome to. So on Prop 28, I will move. A support.
Second.
All right.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil? Councilmember Phil Seth?
No.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries four three.
Okay. And then Prop thirty-one. I will move support. Second. And no one's spoken for a second?
A second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And if anyone else wants to make a motion, Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I'll move to support Prop thirty.
Second.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coop?
No.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
No.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
No.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
The motion does not carry.
Okay, I think that concludes this item. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
And that leaves us with Councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. I'll go ahead and wade in on a couple. One is that the Cantor Art Museum opened a major exhibit of Asian art and that they are on a path to become what they hope to be the one of the top Asian art museums in the country. And I had not appreciated such a significant effort was being made, and it's a big commitment by the university and the museum. Second, I a number of us, most of us, were at the Board in Commission Recognition Event. And I just want to say that the city clerk staff did a really exceptional job, not just a good job. The, I heard multiple expressions of appreciation from board and commission members, not just that they were recognized, but what a great event they found it to be, and it was really special. Lastly, our city clerk was scheduled off today. One of the assistant city clerks was ill, and Assistant City Clerk Ben Nguyen had to cover everything and did a remarkable job this evening for a first time running solo or anytime running solo. So on that note, meetings adjourned.